Good evening, welcome to the Costa Mesa Planning Commission meeting for Monday, August 8th. I call the meeting to order and I would apologize to the public for a little bit of a late start. We were having some technical difficulties with Zoom, but we think we got it all worked out, so we'll get going. Please join Commissioner Toller in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, thank you Commissioner Toller. Anna, roll call please.
Charity Ercol.
Here.
Vice Chair Zick.
Here.
Commissioner Rojas.
Here.
Commissioner Toller.
Here.
Commissioner Russell.
Here.
Commissioner Vivar.
Present.
Commissioner Erith.
Present.
Okay, thank you very much. Folks, just a quick announcement. Make sure your cellphones are either on vibrated or turned off, please, so we don't have them going off in the middle of the public hearing, I would appreciate it. This brings us to public comment portion of the agenda this evening. This part of the agenda is, provides an opportunity for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items that are within our jurisdiction but are not, repeat, not on tonight's agenda. So, if there's any member of the public that wishes to speak to the Planning Commission on an issue that is not on tonight's agenda, now's the time to do it. Please come forward to either one of the podiums and you'll have three minutes to speak. Okay, seeing no one in chambers, Anna, do we have anyone on Zoom or telephone?
Caller ending in 720, you may provide your public comment.
And please hit star six on your phone to unmute yourself, or unmute yourself on Zoom. Are we not getting... They're not on mute and we're not hearing them?
No, they're not on mute.
Okay, very good. Is there anyone else?
No, there's not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so we'll close public comments, that brings us to Commissioner Comments, we'll begin with Commissioner Erith.
Thank you Chair, I have no comments this evening.
Okay, Commissioner Vivar.
Yeah, just wanted to make a quick note here about my appreciation for the participation of the community in tonight's meeting. You are welcome to participate not only in this meeting, but in any of our regular Planning Commission meetings, which happen at the same time every other week here in chambers, and as well as following City of Costa Mesa's city council meetings, which also have very important matters for the public. And you can get updates online, you can sign up to get updates online. And thank you to those who are also following this meeting on Zoom or on YouTube. And that's it for me, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Rojas?
I have no comments.
Okay, Commissioner Toller?
No comments tonight.
Commissioner Russell?
No comments tonight, thank you.
Vice Chair.
Nothing, I think.
Okay, just a quick note from me, Mr. Yang, I hope you'll extend my appreciation by your staff and to Mr. Seth Araman for the today's installation of the stop signs at Sonora Road and Drake Avenue. That street has been a drag strip for as long as I can remember and I've lived on it, and I can tell you already that the speed on the streets has reduced remarkably, just witnessing people coming up to that stop sign and then not being able to get a good head of steam up, so really appreciate the installation of that sign.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll let Mr. Seth Araman know.
Thank you very much. Okay, that takes care of Commissioner Comments, we have nothing on the consent calendar this evening, so we'll move to public hearing items. We will go to public hearing item number one, which is a continuation of a public hearing. Anna, could you please read that into the record?
Public hearing item number one, planning application 21-27 for retail cannabis storefront use with delivery located at 1072 Bristol Street, Suite 100. Please note, we have received public comments on this item that have been provided to the commission and made a part of the record. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Erith, do you have any ex parte communications to report?
Yes, sir, I do. Since the last meeting, I've talked to Andy Singh twice, but I think the call dropped a couple times, he could consider it four times. So, that's it for this item, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Vivar?
I have spoken to members of the community, residents of the circle, and also to an existing tenant in the subject property, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rojas?
I've had none, sir.
Commissioner Toller, any ex parte communications?
No.
Commissioner Russell?
No.
Vice Chair Zick?
No, sir.
I have none. Ms. Halligan, floor's yours.
Good evening Chair and Commissioners. Tonight, we are reviewing planning application 21-27, a request for a conditional use permit to establish a retail cannabis storefront with delivery. The use is conditionally permitted per the Costa Mesa Municipal Code. The city's application process involves several steps. At this point, the applicant is at the conditional use permit step. If approved, they would move on to building permits and inspections, and after passing those inspections, they would be allowed to obtain a cannabis business permit and then a local business license. After our city's process, they would also have to obtain a state license. The subject 0.6 acre property is located at the southwest intersection of Bristol Street and Newport Boulevard. The site is Zon C1 Local Business District. Existing development consists of a two-story, 11,900 square foot multi-tenant commercial building. Adjacent uses are other multi-tenant buildings, a lumberyard, auto dealership, and single-family homes. The subject property meets the separation requirements for a cannabis storefront. Vehicular access to the site is provided by two driveways, one off Newport Boulevard and one off Bristol Street. Here are some photos of the existing conditions. The site is in great condition. Note that the site is subject to the Municipal Code section on legal non-conforming development. It is non-conforming in terms of the setback along Bristol Street, the floor area ratio, and parking. A non-conforming development is allowed to remain so long as the development, which means the property itself is not made more non-conforming. This is the proposed site plan. The storefront would occupy an approximately 3,300 square foot first-floor suite. Proposed improvements include shielded security lighting, shielded security lighting along the property perimeter, and adding a bicycle rack to encourage multimodal transportation. The applicant provided a preliminary photometric study. If approved, a photometric study will be reviewed during the plan check. This is the proposed floor plan. The customer flow would be one-way. As proposed, customers would enter through a lobby door located on the southwestern side of the building. After a customer's identity and age are verified and their transaction is completed shoes they choose to make one, they must leave through the separate exit room door. The exit room would be located in the interior of the property facing the parking lot. The other areas of the proposed licensed premise would only be accessible to employees with proper security credentials. Vendors would need to be accompanied by employees at all times. As conditioned, a security guard would monitor the area 24 hours a day, seven days a week. This rendering shows the proposed entrance of the retail storefront. Although you can see a sign next to the door, the sign would be under a separate permit and is not part of the CUP application. This exhibit shows the parking lot and where delivery vehicles and vendors would park. You'll see the red circle outlines the three stalls that are closest to the secured access door. The municipal code allows, or requires, four parking spaces for every thousand square feet of retail or office space. Instead of 47 parking spaces required by the code, the site currently has 36 stalls, plus bike racks would be installed, which would create a total of 37 parking spaces. So although the municipal code allows the legal non-conformance to continue, staff requested that the applicant survey the parking usage at times in which the existing tenants would overlap with the proposed cannabis storefront. They collected parking counts at 8:00 AM, 10:00 AM, noon, 2:00, 4:00 PM, and 6:00 PM on a Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Planning visited the site unannounced on more than 20 occasions to verify the counts. On average, 26 parking spaces, or 72% of all stalls, were available. This exceeds the required 14 stalls for the storefront. As conditioned, if parking shortages or other parking-related problems occur, the Director of Economic Development Services will require the business to make operational changes, and I'll go over those in more detail later. The proposed use is also conditioned to have at least one parking monitor during business hours for at least the first 90 days of operating. The owner provided a business plan and include details that were evaluated by the city's cannabis consultant, HTL Companies. The business plan describes the owner's cannabis experience and expertise, proof of capitalization, and proposed day-to-day operations. The business plan contains proprietary details and is not included as an attachment. The applicant also provided a professionally-prepared security plan, which was evaluated by the city's cannabis consultant. They determined that the proposed plan addresses the city and the state's requirements for safety. There are over 70 proposed conditions of approval. Since the parking is legal non-conforming, I would like to summarize two conditions that are specific to controlling parking. Operational condition number seven, if parking problems develop, the business must institute measures to minimize or eliminate the problem per the Director of Economic and Development Services. Temporary or permanent parking management strategies include, but are not limited to, reducing hours, having parking monitors, encouraging customers to take advantage of delivery services, offering an employee shuttle, and incentivizing employees and customers to carpool, cycle, or take public transportation. Operational condition number 24, in the first 90 days of business operations, at least one parking attendant shall monitor the parking lot. Customers shall not park in the adjacent properties or in neighborhoods. The attendant shall also ensure that the parking lot is efficient and not negatively impacting adjacent properties. Staff will periodically visit the business unannounced within the first 90 days to verify the parking and circulation conditions. After the initial 90 days, staff will determine if the parking attendants are still needed to maintain efficient parking and circulation flow. The required findings for the CUP are, the proposed use is substantially compatible with developments in the same general area and would not be materially detrimental to other properties within the area. Granting the conditional use permit will not be materially detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare of the public, or otherwise injurious to property or improvements within the immediate neighborhood. Granting the conditional use permit will not allow a use, density, or intensity which is not in accordance with the general plan designation and any applicable specific plan for the property. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to find the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act per SEQUEL Guidelines Section 15301, Class 1 Existing Facilities, and approve planning application 21-27, subject to conditions of approval and code requirements, and that also includes the state requirements. This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant's agent, the proposed licensee, and their measure ex partner are available to answer questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Ms. Halligan. Commissioner Erith, do you have any questions of staff?
Thank you Chair, I do. And Ms. Halligan, thank you so much for the presentation, that was great. Let's start out with page 10 of the agenda report and also compare that to what was page 31 on the conditions of approval in the first iteration from the last meeting. I noticed the page numbers are missing on this iteration, so. Go ahead and pull that up.
I'm sorry, can you repeat which page on the current agenda?
On the current agenda, 10, and what was page 31 of the conditions of approval in the last iteration? So it's the second to last paragraph. It starts out with, "As with many new uses and based on many factors that are difficult to quantify, it is difficult to anticipate exact demand for a new use. The proposed use is conditioned to have at least one parking monitor during business hours for the first 90 days," as you mentioned. And if I turn to page 31, the last one, it's number 24, it says, "In the first 90 days of business operations, there shall be at least one parking attendant to monitor the parking lot." So, I'll get to my question. How does parking work for other tenants in the building? Are they, more specifically, I guess, are they going to have their own parking designated for their businesses within this area?
So, the properties, all tenants share their parking stalls. At this moment, they don't designate their parking stalls. One of the reasons why we asked the applicant to visit the site, and why we visited the site so many times, was to get a better idea of parking usage for those tenants.
Okay. So I guess that's to say there is no specific plan to designate parking for specific tenants, other tenants within the building, or to restripe to say that this is only for, say, State Farm?
At this time, I'm not aware of that proposal, but we do have a condition that if parking problems should arise, the director can, you know, enforce various requirements to solve those parking issues, and, you know, assigning parking stalls could be part of that.
Okay. I may have missed this in the most recent iteration of this item, but you did mention during the presentation that the signage would be under a separate application. Can you explain that a little bit, please?
In the City of Costa Mesa, sign permits are separate, and so the signs will be processed if this is approved.
And will that come back to Planning Commission?
This sign would not. Planning Commission would only review, like, planned sign programs.
Okay. And to the best of my knowledge, signs do not include any depiction of cannabis or cannabis leaves and so forth, right?
That is correct. Our code is specific about what they can display.
Okay. So I do notice that there are two entrances and two exits on the subject property. Is there a reason for asking for only one parking attendant for 90 days as compared to two? Seems like a fairly large property for one person to monitor.
Yeah, we're not committed to the one. I do, we have used the one monitor for other sites, but it's open to discussion.
Okay. And I guess this next question might be for the applicant, once he or she comes up. I guess we can turn to page 13 of the agenda at this point. It's in the, let's say, 1, 2, 3, third paragraph, it says, "Staff do not anticipate that the proposed retail cannabis use would be materially detrimental to the adjacent commercial uses that include offices, hardware, store, lumberyard, et cetera. The proposed use would also not be materially detrimental to the abutting residences because the site features a block wall buffer, mature landscaping, limited operation hours, and proposes to add security lighting and so forth. What does the city consider materially detrimental? Has a working definition for your determination?"
Thanks Commissioner Erith, I'll take that one. Roughly, it's a decision that has, or likely has, the ability to have an adverse impact on a public or an entity or use and their enjoyment of land. So it is subjective, and it's possible the city attorney can add some more feedback on the subjectivity of it, but basically it's what the adverse impact might be.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Drapkin, and if Mr. Preziosi would like to chime in, that's fine.
Mr. Preziosi, do you have anything to add?
No, I think Mr. Drapkin adequately characterized that it's necessarily a subjective standard, and it deals with the immediate effects of the application of proposed use on the surrounding properties and enjoyment of the surrounding properties.
Okay, thank you, sir, go ahead Commissioner.
Thank you, Chair. So, by its very definition of being subjective, it is open to interpretation, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. We can turn to page 14 now, please. It is first paragraph under the first bullet point. In the middle, it says, "The general plan land use element, the city's commercial..." Okay, it says, "As stated in the general plan land use element, the city's commercial designations quote, 'accommodate the full range of commercial activity present and desired in Costa Mesa,' unquote. The use is consistent with general plan policies related to providing a mixture of commercial goods, services, and employment opportunities, expanding the city's tax base and promoting the incubation of unique and specialized businesses." So with the proposed business taking up a larger footprint of the total area, is that providing less or more of a mix? I guess that's a bit rhetorical, but you know what I'm getting at.
I can start or you can start, Mr. Drapkin, what would you prefer?
And if you don't want to opine on that, that's fine as well.
It's a tough one.
It's, I think your question was directed towards what is basically the percentage of the 3,000 square foot unit as opposed to the 11,000 square foot total building area? So, I mean, just from a numbers perspective, we're looking at about maybe a fourth, a little greater than a fourth.
Okay. And the business is proposing to take up multiple units within that complex, correct?
This business is only proposing to take up, well, is proposing to take up two units.
Okay.
So yeah, multiple.
Okay.
Two current. And I don't know this for a fact, and this might be a better question for the applicant, but I think there might be another office tenant that also is taking up more than one suite. I could be incorrect, though, on that.
Yeah, I guess the part of what I just read that kind of hangs me up is when it says, "Providing a mixture of commercial goods," because there is, you know, by definition, less of a mix by taking up a larger footprint. Correct, okay.
That's very site-specific. When I'm looking at a general plan perspective, we're thinking community-wide. And so this is a new up-and-coming use throughout the community.
Okay, yeah, I guess the...
That's what I would have added as well, just for a little context. When you're talking about a mix of commercial uses, of commercial uses from a planning perspective, we're looking at a citywide mix of commercial uses as opposed to a site-specific look. Certainly, it could be considered either way.
Okay.
From a planning perspective, we're looking at community-wide.
Okay, so ergo, the site-specificness, we wouldn't really look at this as being less of a mix of commercial activity, even though it might take up the lion's share or at some point the entirety of this property?
I think yes and no. You might also be able to look at this, you can look at it from a lot of perspectives, but one of the other perspectives is, this is a different use than there right now. So that might be another way to look at that question, is, you know, it's providing some diversity with regards to the type of land use.
Okay, all right. Theoretically, or I guess, does staff know of this business's intention or theoretical intention to expand operations? So, for example, is what, in what is being presented today? Is there any, has there been any discussion about expansion into this business complex?
The application before you is only for this suite on the first floor. There is a public list of applicants, there's a different application on the second floor that is not being heard tonight.
Okay, so theoretically, should the business want to expand into this building, would that also come back to us, or would that be under the discretion?
That is a totally separate application, and it's actually under a different state license type.
Okay.
But tonight, we're only looking at this type 10 use with delivery in this specific suite.
Okay.
So, yeah, we want to make sure we're dividing up those two projects.
Okay, great. And I think with that, that is my questions for staff for now, I do have that one question for the applicant.
Thank you Commissioner. Yeah, you can ask that, the question about potential expansion. I would just point out one thing, that if, you know, the law firm upstairs decided to take up the whole building, that would eliminate a lot of mix of potential services and retail uses as well, so I get where you're, I get the line of questioning. I just kind of want to point out that, you know, yes, this is a new use, but it's a new use allowed under the code, and any use allowed under the code that could take up the whole building might be eliminating a mix of other uses. Commissioner Vivar, do you have any questions of staff?
Yes, sir, I do. Okay, thank you staff, also for your presentation, I do have several questions. My first question pertains to a garbage truck operation, so you might remember that when we reviewed cannabis application for 1921 Harbor Boulevard, which had a mobile home park behind it, staff conditioned that garbage truck operations and presumably other heavy vehicle operations could only occur between 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM. Is there a reason that that wasn't conditioned into this project, which also abuts several homes and presumably is going to have more use of garbage truck services than the existing businesses?
So the existing trash enclosure is in the front of the property by Bristol Street, it's adjacent from a lumberyard, and the state does not allow them to just dispose of cannabis there, so there are procedures they'd have to follow. I believe in the other project, the trash enclosure was adjacent to residential.
Okay.
But in this case, it's as far away as it can be on the property.
Okay. So I followed up with one of the public comments that was said in the last meeting regarding this project. I spoke to somebody at the school district, and there is in fact a school bus stop at the Masters Circle in Newport Boulevard, which serves Sonora Elementary School, when there are students enrolled in the neighborhood who would be attending Sonora Elementary School, so does our consideration of this project at all factor the fact that there is a school bus stop probably within sight distance of this project?
The municipal code does not establish a minimum separation from school bus stops or any bus stop.
Okay, even if that were an elementary school?
That is correct. So the municipal code only established a separation from, like, schools, but not their actual bus stops.
Okay. My final question also follows up on one of the public comments said at the last meeting. I spoke to the owner of the business, the Farmers Insurance, which is at 102, Suite 102 in this subject property building, and she informed me that, in fact, her lease is not being renewed, it will expire on December 31st, and I have reason to believe that when this suite is empty, because it will be empty, she informed me that she is leaving soon and finding another place in the city, so I have reason to believe that the applicant in question would like to...
Commissioner Vivar, I'm going to interrupt you, I'm sorry, with all due respect, I am. I appreciate your conversation. With all due respect, I am, I appreciate your conversations with tenants in the building, it's certainly within your purview to ask for information. Based on what she said, I would ask that if you want to confirm what you found out, that you ask the applicant when they come up. But, because here's why. What I don't want is, before we even open the public hearing, have commissioners offering conjecture about what they think may or may not happen in the future, because it creates an opportunity where somebody might infer that you have an opinion about this business, or you've made up your mind about the application prior to the hearing of evidence. And I would just assume that if you want to ask the applicant that question, what's happening with that tenant, that's fine, but I, the reason to believe statements are a little, they worry me a little bit. So, that's all due respect.
Sir, the question I bring this up to staff is that, in the case that, in the case, theoretical case, that this business in question, which is, I believe, 3,200 and something square feet, were to expand into the adjoining business and total 4,538 square feet, I think that would change the math a bit, wouldn't it, in terms of parking, so?
Except, Commissioner Vivar, that isn't the application before us tonight. We are limited in our review of the application that's before us. Speculating about what might happen in the future is not appropriate, given that that expansion is not part of any application that's before us. And to kind of pursue that line of questioning, or make a judgment about this application in anticipation that they might expand, puts the city in some exposure as to whether or not, in this hearing, somebody made up their mind before the public hearing was over. That's all.
Commissioner Vivar, I just wanted to make it clear that this CUP is only for that specific approximately 3,300 square foot space. In the future, if they wish to expand, they would have to go through another process in which they'd be amending the plan, we'd have to go back to HDL and review their security plan, a revised business plan, and bring it back to Planning Commission.
So, that'd be Planning Commission review, not administrative review?
Correct. Especially if they're going to be expanding, there would even be a new traffic impact fee and other things. So, it'd be a whole nother process. So, tonight, we are only focused on the project before us.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I think that's it for me.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Rojas, do you have any questions of staff?
I do not, thank you.
Commissioner Toller?
I just had one quick question. On the site plan, it calls out LED strip lights on two of the elevations, I think they're above the entrance and exit. If we know any details about that, what those look like, and I just want to confirm that those are going to be reviewed per signed standards?
Correct. And shielding is required. They have a draft photometric study and will be reviewing a final photometric study during plan check. They have submitted preliminary plans for what the lighting fixtures would look like, but we're not doing a design review of the lighting tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Russell, do you have questions?
No questions for staff, thank you.
How about you, Vice Chair, say? Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could you put up on the screen the slide from your presentation that showed the parcel zone zoning and adjacent zoning? Yeah. The proposed site is in a slightly different color, is that for illustration, or is the nature of that C1 zone parcel different than the other C1 around it?
That's correct. It's just a filter that we use to highlight the property. So, it is C1-like, the adjacent properties.
Okay. And can you give me some idea? So, I'm familiar from our first hearing on this, some of the nature of the concerns that were expressed. And I'm interested in understanding, or maybe helping understand, the range of potential uses that that C1 zone would include. And I'm particularly interested in the retail uses that any of the buildings in this site, since it's all zone C1, could use. So, could you give me some sense of what our code would allow for various types of retail uses?
Yes, the C1 Local Business District is intended to meet the local business needs of the community by providing a wide range of goods and services. Some uses that would be permitted by right are to-go restaurant, that's the style of restaurant that has less than 300 square feet of public area, a courthouse, a police station, catering businesses, vehicle sales with up to one outdoor display vehicle, indoor vehicle storage, and non-cannabis stores. And that includes, you know, all sorts of retail stores, even vape shops. And those would be permitted by right, because they meet the parking and they're permitted by right in the code.
Okay. And so, you mentioned some food-related uses, so people could actually prepare food, have kitchen facilities, prepare food, sell it to the public?
Correct. But not if they're serving alcohol after a certain time of night. If they wanted to do that, they would have to come back for a conditional use permit.
Okay. Would, and I think the answer would be yes to this, if there was a business that wanted to operate in those buildings that provided counseling services for substance abuse recovery, is that a use that would be allowed?
Our code requires a parking ratio of 10 stalls per 1,000 square feet for group counseling, and so this site would be subject to a CUP, and they would have to provide accommodations to deal with parking.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. I have no questions of staff at the moment, so we'll open the public hearing, and I will ask the applicant to come forward, and if they have a presentation, please state your name and address for the record, and off you go. Oh, let me turn that on, I'm sorry. There you go.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Sean Maddox, address is 455 Linden Street, Laguna Beach, California. I'd like to thank Michelle for her presentation this evening, as well as for staff support and recommendation. I'd also like to thank the commissioners for hearing us tonight and for having me here to have this presentation. My name's Sean Maddox, I'm here to represent CM Triangle Enterprise. The location in question is for a cannabis retail use at 1072 Bristol Street. This is intended to be a brand-driven cannabis retail location. This is the brainchild of two manufacturing companies within the cannabis industry. Yami Karma, who's been a Costa Mesa manufacturing business since around 2019, they actually just came up and had their distribution license approved a couple of weeks ago in front of staff. Nuvada is owned and run by Andy Singh, who will be the CEO of the proposed dispensary. He runs a manufacturing business and has a license in Los Angeles. Mr. Singh will also be opening a retail location in Corona within the next six to 12 months, and also has plans to open retail in New Jersey. The proposed operations at this location would be a retail storefront with delivery. Next slide. Slide number two, I think we're on four. There we go. A little bit more about the owners. Yami Karma is owned by Chelsea and Crystal Kitahara. They've been members of the Costa Mesa Chamber of Commerce and part of the cannabis business community in Costa Mesa, really since its inception. They're the second licensed manufacturer within Costa Mesa. Their brand is female-owned, sister-owned cannabis brand. They've, they're the number three branded product in the tincture market within California in over 300 retail stores, and their tinctures and topicals are aimed at providing healthy, affordable, and effective solution for those seeking cannabis for its overall benefits. The other owner of the proposed business is Andy Singh, he owns a manufacturing company called Nuvada. Nuvada produces products with proprietary cannabinoid and terpene blends that create customized effects such as creativity, energy, and tranquility. Their cannabis wellness brand aimed at facilitating wellness and mindfulness. As a way to supplement product sales, Andy has begun developing brand-focused retail stores, with his first store set to opening Corona, and another hopefully to serve the Costa Mesa community. I myself am not an owner, but I'm the chief compliance officer for the business, I'm also general counsel, I am the founder of Green Consulting Partners, which is a cannabis legal compliance firm that operates out of Newport Beach, also the founding partner of Maddox Law, which is a cannabis law firm that services the cannabis industry. Next slide, please. The proposed location at 1072 Bristol Street is shown in these slides. In the upper right-hand corner, you can see the site plan with the 37 parking spaces that was discussed in Michelle's presentation. It is a commercially-zoned C1 property, which is a conforming use. It is also a general plan designation for general commercial. For the pre-application that was submitted almost a year ago, the facility meets the separation requirements of being over 1,000 feet away from K through 12 schools, playgrounds, childcare, or homeless shelters. It is also 600 feet away from any youth centers. And as staff knows and the commissioners know, there is no separations required between residentials. On the bottom right of this slide is a depiction of the floor plan. As you can see, there's a general lobby/man trap, which is a secured entrance to the facility for customers. Customers will then enter the retail space, and upon making a transaction, immediately exit the man trap. Customers will never have access to the back-of-house facilities, which would include office space, product storage space, a vault, kitchen, and a conference break room. Next slide. Most importantly in tonight's presentation is the issue of community outreach and neighbor concerns. We were originally planned to submit the CUP on July 25th. This project has been in process, I'd say, for over a year, with Yami Karma, you know, being a vocal supporter of the cannabis chamber in Costa Mesa, being behind Measure Q and its adoption, and then this site itself being acquired for over a year, having gone through the pre-application, the CBP, the CUP process, and everything necessary for approvals. Prior to the July 25th CUP, mailers were sent out to surrounding residents based off the city's required mailing list. Those mailers were sent out as kind of a preliminary reach-out on behalf of the business to discuss and open a dialogue with the residents to address any concerns that they may have. Prior to the CUP hearing, I think somewhere around 24, 25, five letters were submitted by surrounding residents. Based off of those letters, the business owners decided it was in the best interest of the project and the community to take a step back, take a moment to engage with the residents, and do everything they could to hear the concerns and issues that the residents were bringing up, and try to find constructive solutions in order to address them and make sure that they weren't proposing a use that they felt would have a negative impact on the surrounding community. As part of that outreach, an additional mailer was sent on July 28th. That included a six-page FAQ that was based off of all of the specific issues that were raised by residents in the letters that were sent to the city. On July 31st, personal emails were sent out to each individual who reached out to the city, addressing their concerns, providing an FAQ, and discussing all the steps that would be taken by the business, as well as the conditions of use and approval that had to be abided by that would address their concerns. On August 3rd, a meet and greet was held at the site, during which about eight members from the community showed up. A neighboring business owner, as well as six residents of the Master Circle community all showed up. And while they didn't necessarily leave supporting us, I think that there was some constructive dialogue, and what we did learn is that the Master Circle community is a tight-knit community, and we were there to understand their concerns, talk through some of them, and I think really get a feeling for what type of communication could be built if the city allowed us to move forward with this project. In listening to these concerns, I think about 10 major concerns were synthesized from the outreach that we heard from the community. These included noise pollution, transient traffic, vehicle traffic, loitering, increased crime, vandalism, odor, impact on the youth, proximity to rehabilitation centers, and the overall ownership responsibility of the founders of this dispensary. Through the overall outreach and communication, it's pretty clear that some of these issues exist in the neighborhood as is. There seems to be a transient issue, seems to have been some vandalism that was mentioned based off of the proximity to the golf course, seemed to be some traffic and parking issues that exist based off of the one-way of Newport Boulevard, and just the general lack of parking in the Master Circle community. But I think beyond bringing these issues up, the community essentially said, "We believe the introduction of cannabis use are going to exacerbate these and create new issues." I want to draw quick attention to some of the conditions of approval that staff included in their report. General planning condition 10 requires a security plan that has been approved by HDL companies. General plan condition number 21 allows, requires that no persons under 21 are allowed to enter the premises or be employed by, employed by the business. The condition prior to the CBP's issuance requires signage to keep noise levels down, and asks vehicle drivers to be considerate of the noise in entering their vehicles and exiting the facility. Operational condition number four requires a security guard at all times, 24 hours, seven days a week. Operational condition number six, it's a great condition, "The use shall be conducted at all times in a manner that will allow the quiet enjoyment of the surrounding neighborhood. The operator shall institute appropriate security and operational measures as necessary to comply with this requirement." Pretty broad in general, but essentially it says, "We have to be a good neighbor. Otherwise, our conditions of approval are violated and we could lose the license." Operational condition 18, "The facility shall prohibit loitering within 50 feet of the building." Condition number 20, "requirement to maintain air quality and odor devices." And requirement number 24, "A parking attendant shall be required for the first 90 days of operations." So, in communicating with, with the neighbors, in hearing their concerns, and in looking at the conditions of approval, as well as the city's allowance of this use without a buffer to residential, and I know going back even to the ordinances that were accepted over a year ago, at one point, there was a buffer that was included and was in consideration on these. I think one of the reasons that that buffer was eventually eliminated was the idea that the requirements of this use would have to have processes in place that would mitigate any potential issues on the surrounding community. And I think that the conditions of approval evidence that. I think some of the conditions just read evidence that. Want to go quickly through the concerns communicated and then move on to some of the nuisance mitigation techniques of the business. But with respect to noise pollution, we're required to have no loitering on-site, there will be a parking attendant as well as a roving security guard. This facility is also abutting the 55 freeway, so there's already some noise pollution due to over, from traffic, in addition to being within the flight zone of John Wayne Airport, which has flights going in and out till 10 o'clock at night. With respect to transient traffic, again, 24-hour security, onsite roving guards should help solve the transient problem in this area as opposed to exacerbate it. Loitering, increased crime, and vandalism all fall under kind of the security plan requirements of this business. Again, this business is required to submit a professionally-prepared security plan that was reviewed by the city's security consultant and approved. Beyond that, with respect to odor, comprehensive odor control plan, which you guys will hear, and I'm sure you're used to hearing, negative pressurization and carbon filtration. With respect to youth impact, there's a specific condition about individuals under the age of 21. And then, you know, with respect to the cannabis industry in general, at least the legal cannabis industry, all products are not allowed to be advertised or marketed towards children. There's child-resistant packaging, tamper-evident packaging. And then beyond that, the legal industry comes at a price. These products are rigorously tested, and they come to market, and they're really not the target of diversion to youths and minors. You're seeing a lot more of diversion come through illegal businesses, trap shops, gray area businesses, which are illegal businesses because of the affordability of the product, which is about half the price of what you spend at a legal cannabis store. One of the interesting concerns that was raised was the proximity to rehab centers. We never heard any outreach from these rehab centers, we were never able to verify if they're city-licensed centers, but we'd like to work with them. There's obviously some HIPAA compliance issues with respect to patient privacy, but one of the measures that has been discussed amongst ownership was using the parking attendant and roving security to kind of filter individuals coming from the Master Circle community, and to not service anybody who cannot provide proof of residency within that area. And that would do, one, abate any concerns about people parking in the Master Circle area, as well as avoid anybody who might be in a rehab facility who does not actually have a residence within that area. Lastly, ownership responsibility. I think this is a unique project. We've got the sisters from Yami Karma. We've got the sisters from Yummy Karma, whose business is in Costa Mesa, less than a 10-minute drive away. Owner Andy Singh is planning to have an office located on-site, so he will be there five days a week from, I hope, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, but I can't vouch for that, but he'll be on-site at all times. He's also an Orange County resident who lives within 20 minutes' drive of the facility. And his phone number and email have already been handed out to the majority of the individuals within the master circle, and he's made himself available throughout this process. You know, overall, it's our belief that the way the city has planned, the ordinance, and our conditions of approval, that there won't be a negative impact on the community. We believe that actually some of the conditions put on us might abate and, I guess, get rid of some of the existing issues that are in the community that were discussed on some of the letters of outreach. So, with that, I'll move to the next slide, which talks about some of our nuisance mitigations With respect to odor control, I mentioned it quickly earlier. Negative pressurization with active, activated carbon filters. Essentially, the facility is required to have maintained a negative pressurization on the inside, so anytime a door's opened, air comes into the facility as opposed to exiting it. The ventilation system within the facility will then take that air and push it out of the facility, but before it exits the facility, it will be treated by the activated carbon With respect to neighborhood compatibility and community integration, I think the most important aspect of this project, of which I've never seen in all the projects I've presented before, is just the feedback of the community and the concern of the residents. And I think that it's incumbent on the operators and their sincerity on the owners and the operators to continue a line of communication and dialogue if this is approved by the commission this evening. As I mentioned, multiple mailers have been sent out. A meet and greet was established. An FAQ was put together to answer some of these concerns, but I think that's really just the beginning of what would hopefully be a collaborative process if this business is approved moving forward. The business will have a neighborhood liaison who's available 24/7 to the city, to the community members. Mr. Singh's office will be located on-site, as mentioned. Another thing that's been discussed amongst ownership coming out of the meet and greet is something like a monthly meeting with the residents, depending on their, you know, willingness to participate. It'll probably take six to eight months for this to be up and running after approval, if approved. And so the idea was during those six to eight months to work with community members, to work towards their concerns, address them. You know, one of the issues that was brought up in the meet and greet was, are our security staff qualified to be security staff? And it's, it's a good question. It was brought up, I think, by a retired captain. And I think it's one of those things, well, we'd be happy to introduce you to him, have you meet them, and understand what they've done in the industry and their history. And if, if you don't feel so, we'd be happy to go look at a few other security companies to give you the satisfaction and comfort that we're bringing somebody to your community that's going to uphold the standards that you have. You know, other issues such as lighting, exiting signage, I think, you know, there were some concerns brought up about exiting on the Newport Boulevard, it being a one-way street and the dangers there. So, when we do have to go through the signage process, trying to work with them to see if there's any additional signage we can include. That would include working with the neighboring businesses that are concerned about us having parking overflow into the businesses and having signs that say parking is prohibited, as well as strict enforcement of towing and things of that nature. You know, lastly, when we're about to open, we will have a community open house two to three weeks before we open, so we would again invite the community members to come to the facility almost as it's built out, so that they can see what's there, so they can see the security measures that we have implemented, so they could meet the staff and get an understanding for how this thing would be operating in its proposed location. Lastly, just a quick one, because I think it's probably the most important thing about this presentation, it's security. Security of the neighbors, security of the business is a chief concern of the operation. It was interesting, some of the outreach letters we received said, "Well, because you require security, you're an inherently dangerous business." I've been in this industry for five-plus years. I've been in facilities before security was required, and I've been in facilities that now that has security requirements. Part of the interesting thing about security requirements is that they are in themselves a deterrent. Having video camera in process, having onsite guards essentially deters the criminal activity that most people are, I guess, fearful of in this situation. As part of the FAQs that we provided to the residents, we provided somewhere between three and five peer-reviewed studies that actually indicated the presence of a licensed cannabis business in a neighborhood decreases criminal activity in the surrounding community. But at the end of the day, it, it becomes incumbent on the operator to actually implement these things and do them correctly. The operator is proposing to work with Yudora Enterprises, which is a minority veteran-owned business. They've been serving the industry since 2010. We plan to have two to three guards on-site during all hours of business, and at least one on-site during hours of off-business. The stations would be at the entrance, the retail floor, as well as a roving exterior sweep. On top of that, there's a robust surveillance and alarm system required as part of the proposed business. This would include indoor and outdoor cameras with facial recognition capability, as well as license plate reading capacity. Most cameras would be 360-degree domed cameras to provide coverage of the entire exterior of the facility, as well as the interior of the facility. Exterior lighting would be designed to cover any blind spots of the facility without any spillage onto the residents. We would have an uninterruptible power supply on-site to make sure that security never went down. The alarm system and security would be provided on a live feed to local law enforcement, so they could view at any time that they desired. And then we'd also have card readers and secure access throughout the facility, so nobody who's unauthorized to enter the facility during non-business hours would be able to do so. Those card readers are individually tagged to each employee, so we'd know who's coming and going, who's tried to get access, who was given access. You know, so there's a high degree of security here that I think allows us to control the site and avoid any of the, the negative impacts that people feel the business would have. You know, I think I was in front of the commission about a month ago for another project on Harbor Boulevard, and one of the commissioners requested an additional condition that the project come in front of the commission six months down the road to see how things are going. I would recommend something similar if the commission decided to move forward and approve this project, because obviously the concerns of the community are extremely important to the operators. Whether sincere or not, they have to placate the concerns of the community. They have to be good operators, or the commission and the city will pull the license, and I think the sincerity is there. We have Orange County locals who've been operating businesses within Costa Mesa for five years, and in the broader community for the same amount of time. So, I, I think that's a condition that they'd be willing to accept and something that I'd recommend adding if it, if the commission deemed it appropriate. Other than that, I'll hand it over to questions that the commissioners may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Maddox. And I want to make sure that you and the applicant have read the staff report and the conditions of approval, and you agree with them?
We have, and we do.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Erich, do you have any questions to the applicant?
I do, thank you, Chair. And again, thank you, Mr. Maddox. Your presentations are always very concise and informational, so thank you. To the, the question that I had earlier, and I think you may have explained this at several points during your presentation, but how, how again will you keep visitors from parking in the master circle when your parking lot is full?
So that, I think there's kind of an inherent impossibility of, of it, and I wouldn't say impossibility, that's, that's a stretch. To park in master circle, you would have to plan to park there before entering the facility. Otherwise, Newport Boulevard is a one-way street, so to then go circle back and park in master circle is about a mile round trip, and it doesn't seem too likely. I think somebody would rather idle in our parking lot and wait for a spot to open. Typical turnover is about 10 minutes, and we'd have parking attendants in the parking lot to abate that. What we, what I did bring up in the presentation would be using the parking attendant and security staff to monitor pedestrians coming from the master circle area. And what we would do is ask for some type of verification or ID to see whether or not they were a resident of the master circle, and if they were not, we would deny entrance into the facility.
Okay. One of the reasons why I ask is, I, I just drove down master circle today, and I went to the subject property. And I thought to myself, if the parking lot were full, and there was a sign that was put out on Newport Boulevard in the distance, say, kind of facing the oncoming traffic from Newport Boulevard, that it would perhaps make a driver feel inclined to turn down the master circle to park in advance of arriving at the, the subject property. So that's one of the reasons why I ask.
So, the concern is if there were a sign...
Facing the oncoming traffic down Newport Boulevard.
So, so if the oncoming traffic from Newport Boulevard could see signage of the business? Yeah, I mean, it's possible. I don't think that any signage would be visible that's being proposed. Obviously, we have to go through signage and get that approved. I think the larger concern would be repeat customers. Somebody who's been there before and had parking issues, and then said, "Well, great, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hit master circle before I get there." And I think the only way we can address that is the measures that we're proposing, using the attendant and the secured, roving security to prohibit anybody from coming from that direction.
Have you talked with the surrounding businesses down Bristol about any potential parking issues that might arise?
Yeah, the neighbor from the building next door came, voiced his concerns, and I think his concerns about parking overflow, I, I don't think the overflow is really the concern as much as the speed of traffic going down Bristol and the potential of missing the turn for the location, and then maybe turning into the following business, and then saying, "Great, I'm here, I'll park." One of the things that we discussed when he showed up to the meeting was actually erecting a fence in between the two to prohibit people from doing that, and then we'd probably have a similar measure on Bristol as we did on Newport Boulevard, where any pedestrian coming in need, needs to show that they weren't coming from the neighboring business, because they could park and go around as opposed to cut through. Right now, there's a clear cut through, and I think a fence would, would get rid of the majority of that as a concern. Another thing we discussed, which again punts things down the road, is putting up signage, not only at our location, but as well as the neighboring business, and then working with a local tow company. I mean, we have no interest in being a nuisance, and it's actually our responsibility to not be a nuisance. So if our customers are going to do things that we don't want them to do, then that's, you know, going to come down on them, and we're willing to have them get towed in order to maintain our status as a good neighbor.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Maddox. Chair, that's all for me, thank you.
Commissioner Vivar, questions to the applicant?
Yes, sir. I do have a couple of questions. Thank you, Mr. Maddox, for your presentation. Very thorough. Thank you. So, you, in your presentation, I'm still not completely sure how you will check that people walking through your site are neighbor, or residents of master circle, would, would people walking through there be asked for an ID, or how would that kind of verification work?
Correct. It would be a request for ID. Our business requires identification for entrance regardless, so it would be an ID check at the perimeter of the facility before allowing them to enter the business.
But, say, like, if somebody were just walking through the parking lot, is that, would they be questioned by the roaming security guard, or if somebody were just walking through the parking lot, would they be questioned at all, or, but only if they headed in a direction of the business entrance?
Likely only if they head in the direction of the business entrance, but, you know, as, as it is now, it's mostly professional buildings, so I think the majority of people coming to the location for those services would be parking. So if somebody were walking through the parking lot, they would probably be flagged, and not just for concerns about whether or not they were coming from the neighboring communities, but also from some of the concerns of, you know, just kind of the homelessness issues and transients walking through the location that we witnessed while we were there for four hours last Wednesday. So just to prevent that stuff as well.
Okay. One of the, I, I appreciate you taking the effort to read the letters. It seems you read all the comment letters of the public. One of the concerns that was also said a couple of times during the last hearing, during the public comments that were said here in, in the chambers, were about expansion of your business. Do you plan to expand at all in the future, or in the near future?
There's no plans to expand the retail location. So I think it's about 3,300 square feet, and it's pretty ideal for retail. There'd be no plans for expansion, and as Michelle stated earlier, if that were requested, we'd have to come in front of you guys, and we'd be eating a bit of crow at that point.
And so the office that you said your staff would occupy, that would also be within that same Suite 100 unit? Mr. Singh?
Mr. Singh has plans to occupy one of the offices upstairs to run his Nevada company out of, so it wouldn't be related to the cannabis business being proposed this evening. It would be another conforming office use, like all of the other office uses at the location. But it would have the added benefit of having an interest holder in this business on-site five days a week and accessible to the community members.
And are you interested at all in purchasing the building at some point, or?
There is interest in a purchase of the building by Mr. Singh and an investment group, so that would likely be part of the plan moving forward.
So I'm guessing that the purchase, then, he would probably move his various business aspects into the rest of the building?
No, there's some current tenants, and I think he'd prefer to be collecting rent right now.
Okay, sure, of course.
Paying himself rent.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Maddox. And, Mr. Chairman, I defer back to you, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rojas, questions to the applicant?
My question's been answered, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Toller?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Russell?
No questions at this time, thank you.
Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of questions. Thank you, Mr. Maddox, for your presentation. Similar to other presentations you've given to us, yours was complete, thorough, understandable, and to my way of seeing it, quite, quite sincere. The question I have has to do with your availability. You explained what your role was in this business, and if you were the person that was going to be occupying that office, I might have the sense as a concerned resident that I could come to you anytime I had a concern, and you seemed like you'd be reasonably willing to listen and try to ameliorate whatever my concern was. But you're not the guy who's sitting in the business, and it's entirely possible that Mr. Singh is equally eloquent and sincere as you are. My question is about your availability to the residents. Could you address that?
Yeah, I've given my phone number and email out to all the residents. The 25 email follow-ups came from my direct email. My office is located on MacArthur and PCH, about a 10-minute drive from the facility, so I would be immediately available to any concerned residents.
Okay. And then my second question, the slide maybe previous to this listed all the, thank you, all the various concerns that you were able to glean from your communications with the residents, and you addressed each of them in terms of how you viewed them and how you viewed the conditions and your operations mitigating them. My question is, did you hear anything in your communication from residents that made you think about the operation and actually change any of what you had planned to do in terms of your operation?
So I think we heard some stuff about traffic on Newport Boulevard that made us think about how to direct traffic flows and, you know, some comments that we'll do, and maps that we'll provide on the website to ensure that people are, if possible, coming from Bristol and, and if possible, exiting on Bristol for some concerns about the one-way. I think in reading these responses, some of the policies that were brought up today, such as using the parking attendant to, you know, review identification to ensure nobody's coming from master circle, those were adapted based off that communication. I think the discussion about erecting a fence between the neighboring business came out of that communication as well. The other one that came out of it, and I think this is mostly, you know, credibility to the community that will probably come speak after me today, is that they're very tight-knit and they are good communicators. Not all of them wanted to communicate directly with us through this process, and I understand that. I do hope, if we're given the opportunity, that that communication will change, and I do know that one of the biggest stakeholders and, and voices in this community did show up to our event, and there is a line of communication there, and I would hope that they'd continue to proceed with that line of communication. And I think in earnest, opening up the business planning process over the next six to eight months was something that came out of that meeting, of saying, "Hey, look, these are people, we're in somebody's backyard, right? You can't change that. We are in your backyard." Now, city allows it, right? It's approved by their municipal code and the ordinances that have been approved, and there's legitimate concerns of our neighbors.
I, I think you've answered my question, and I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So, Mr. Maddox, if you can keep that slide up, I wanna focus on outreach a little bit. So when was this, when was the application for this particular land use filed?
I think pre-application was submitted sometime in August of last year.
So August of last year. So the intention was, we would like to open a retail storefront with delivery here. You have a structure set up, where you'd be Karma would be the wholesale provider of the product, I'm assuming. So then, I wanna jump to your outreach. It says here, July nineteenth, original mailer said, is that July nineteenth of this year?
It is.
Why the, why the gap between August and July without, you know, touching base with the residents, said, hey, we're, we're thinking, we wanna come here, we'd like to get to know you? Why?
We didn't even know we had a CUP hearing until July. You know, we've been going through this process.
Did you anticipate you'd have one?
We were hopeful.
Okay. So really, the, from my perspective, what I wanna kinda nail down is, was the initial outreach effort to the community on July nineteenth?
There was actually a door-to-door, I think that occurred back in May or June, where an individual went door-to-door to announce herself.
Okay, no, 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 we're not gonna do that. We'll, we'll postpone the meeting, we'll, we'll go into a recess until everybody calms down. So I asked him a question. He gets to answer the question without any audience interruption. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
So there was a door-to-outreach, door-to-door outreach that occurred in late May or early June as well.
Okay. All right. So I, I'll have another question for you. I think I'll save it until after we hear the public comment, but I, that was the extent of my questions for right now. Thank you, sir, for your presentation, very thorough. Okay? So we'll open the public comment, we'll continue the public comment portion of the continued public hearing from our last meeting. Anyone wish to speak to this item, please come to either podium. You'll have three minutes to speak. When you hear the bell go off, that means you have one more minute. And when you hear the kind of chimes, the microphone will automatically turn off when your three minutes are up, okay? So please come forward to either podium if you wish to speak. Yep. If, if you wanna speak, it might, it'll be, speed things up if you lined up on the sidewall there. Thank you, Vice Chair. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Hello. My name is Claudia Tebs, and I live on the Master Circle. I come here to oppose the opening of the proposed retail cannabis store at 1072 Bristol. I read the outreach pamphlet that was sent out and left, actually left in my mailbox, and I attended the meet and greet held August third. The applicant tried to address our concerns, but there are issues that will, they will not be able to mitigate because of the close proximity to our homes, the hours they will conduct business, and the fact that it's a cash business. And by the way, no one knocked on my door in May or June, and I work from home. They address noise by having security personnel. The storefront is a hundred feet from my property. The parking lot is adjacent to my patio, and my daughter's bedroom overlooks the parking lot. Can you please show attachment A and B? This is the view from my daughter's room into the parking lot, and this is what the parking lot looks like on any given weekend or late evening now, at seven o'clock. No one's there because it's a business office. So the, the fact that they did pop-ups to see how many people were parked there doesn't make any sense to me. The second attachment, please. This is a view of my daughter's bedroom from the parking lot, and this is the fence that is adjacent to my property from the parking stalls. They will not be able to control the noise from people talking loud, motorcycles driving in and out, people gunning their engines and doors slamming. This will happen every single day of the week until very late at night. Proposed hours of operation are 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week. This doesn't include employees and customers after the ten o'clock. They anticipate two to three hundred customers per day with peak hours in the evening. This will be in violation of Costa Mesa's Municipal Code 13283, loud unnecessary noise. Please see Attachment C. It specifically states that unnecessary noise in, that disturbs a quiet and peaceful community is, is violation of the code. They address security by having patrolled and armed guards. This is a cash business, and crime is up. A robbery attempt is likely. And if there's a robbery, the criminal's not gonna run to the middle of Newport Boulevard to Bristol, they're gonna run into our backyards and through our properties. We already had an incident where somebody tried to break into the illegal shed parked in the lot. The guy scaled a fence and ran through my property. If there's--
Yep. Sorry, ma'am, your three minutes are up, and we have a lot of folks, sorry. Yes, sir, go ahead. Hold on. Sorry, I'm sorry, sir, start over.
All right.
I've, I've started your three minutes over, too.
No worries. Thank you to the commission, and thank you to Commissioner Vivar for taking the time to talk to me. I'm a urologist and a professor at UCI, and I moved to California in Orange County because of what it represents. My office is located at Birch and Mesa in Newport Heights. For that reason, my wife and I were looking for a kid-friendly location within close proximity of my office. We are very drawn to the Master Circle because it is a small, quaint, safe, and kid-friendly neighborhood on a cul-de-sac with no through-traffic. We moved there in 2018, and since there have been blessed with two daughters, now aged three and one and a half. Over the past few years, more families with young kids have moved in as well, which has created a really nice environment with children riding bikes and scooters on a daily basis. My three-year-old's actually learning to ride a bike on the cul-de-sac towards the top of the street, which is within fifty feet of where the location is planned. The street is actually our backyard. It is our playground. It is where the kids play, and it is within less than a thousand feet from the dispensary. As a father who chose the street and neighborhood because of the qualities it offers, I am incredibly concerned about the addition of a dispensary within fifty feet of the single entry and exit to our cul-de-sac. I am concerned because of the increased traffic, which will cause a bottleneck. There certainly are shoppers at the dispensary will look for additional parking on our street, and they will do, we all know they will. The security of our children who play on the street, the loudness and ruckus from a business that opens till 10:00 PM, when our kids go to sleep by 8:00 PM at the latest. So again, you're gonna be responsible for my kids not going to sleep. I'm certainly not opposed to the opening of dispensaries, but I know that there are innumerable other options that are far from quaint residential areas with little children that would be much better suited for this type of business. While I understand that you are under significant pressure to approve the numerous requests for dispensaries, your outreach demonstrates that your number-one priority remains the citizens of Costa Mesa. And when I say the outreach, I mean the commission, I don't mean the applicants. As such, I think that it is clear from the response that you have received from our neighborhood that allowing this business to open in this location is neither safe nor logical. Accordingly, I urge you to reject this request and suggest an alternative location far from children and families. Put yourself in our place and think whether you'd want your family to be within such closest proximity and be put in that position. It is your responsibility to protect us and our children. Please have it on record that I stand here in public officially stating that the safety of my kids is a big concern of mine, and that, yes, if you decide to proceed, this will be materially detrimental to our lives, the lives of our kids, as well as the elderly in our community. Finally, finally, I would like to ask the applicants how they would feel if they were in our position, where their kids would be in such close proximity of, within fifty feet of where their dispensary is gonna be. Your best community outreach program actually is, would be actually to pick a different location. If you really care about community and outreach, pick a different location. There are a million locations in Orange County. And I'll counter the, the attorney by saying that I actually looked up LAPD, and LAPD just published in February 22 that there is a doubling in the rate of crimes around cannabis industry. So your data about-- scientist, it's very easy to pick--
Thank you, sir. Time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I, I appreciate the enthusiasm, but applause is just gonna lengthen this, so I would ask you not to. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Thank you. Mary Ann Orr, 174, the Master Circle. Just to update on the crime statistics, compared to the full year of 2021, we're already at a 7.74% increase in crime over prior year, with rape, burglary, larceny, motor-vehicle theft leading those numbers. The trend continues, we're gonna continue to be on a double-digit crime increase year over year. In regards to Application 2127, we know that this location is a legal non-conforming location. They should be having forty-seven parking spaces based on the square footage of the building. They currently have thirty-six regular plus two handicap spots. Looks like, per the directory, there are four tenants in the building that are using, we're guessing, about two thousand square feet, so they should have eight, eight spots allotted to them. Subtracting that and subtracting one spot that they are proposing to use for their delivery van, you're down to twenty-seven spots, twenty less than what they should have. Location, which I was surprised, and if I misunderstood this, I apologize, but I, from my understanding and speaking to City Hall today, the location currently has no designation in regards to their FAR. The applicant stated at the meet and greet that they expected three hundred people a day. So what we assumed would have been a low-traffic FAR, we're believing should be upgraded to a high-traffic FAR, which the definition stands as daily trip generation rates in excess of seventy-five trips per thousand square feet. And this was per the commercial property development standards. So my question to the, to the committee, or the commission then, is how would this be allowed without having some adjustment created to the parking? Because concurrent to Municipal Code 13204, says conforming use may be located on a non-conforming property so long as the proposed site modifications do not result in a greater site conform, non-conformities. They're gonna park on our street and the building next to it, we know that. Also researching several of the other applications against, presented to the Planning Commission, there were several land use policy numbers. One I would like to bring to the point was LU 3.1, that's supposed to protect existing stabilized residential neighbors from encroachment or incompatible and potentially disruptive land uses or activities. Current businesses are there Monday through Friday, nine through five. They're proposing seven to ten, seven days a week. This has got to be considered disruptive. I guess the other question is, why would they have been allowed to put their application through without this in there? The other thing is, LA County and San Diego County have got ordinances regarding dispensaries can't be closer than 200 and 100.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Hi, I'm a resident of the Master Circle and an attorney practicing in the city of Costa Mesa specializing in construction and general liability. Costa Mesa Municipal Code, Section 13-200.93E stipulates that no cannabis retail storefront shall use, shall be located within 1,000 feet from a K through twelve school, playground, licensed childcare, or homeless shelter that is in operation at the time of the submission of a completed cannabis business permit application, since these areas are considered sensitive-use areas. But why are residential neighborhoods and rehab houses omitted as sensitive-use areas in the Costa Mesa Municipal Code? The text of Balicu from the city of Costa Mesa says that it is, I quote, "an ordinance authorizing regulating taxing retail sales slash deliveries of cannabis, limiting locations of cannabis establishments to protect neighborhoods, schools, children," quote. First of all, the Master Circle is a diverse neighborhood that is literally on the border of the subject location. Second, the Master Circle is a home to several children. As such, the residential neighborhood of the Master Circle is considered a sensitive-use area because it is a neighborhood and there are children. Our neighbor, our neighboring county, Los Angeles County, has specified the required distance between dispensaries and residential homes to be at least a 200-foot radius. The county of Orange and city of Costa Mesa have failed to identify the required distance. Why is that? As a result, we ask you to look at your neighboring county as an example and require at least 200, a 200-foot radius between residential neighborhoods and dispensaries, if not the 1,000-foot distance required for sensitive-use areas. In addition to the effect of traffic on the neighborhoods, including noise, impact of pedestrians, impact on residential and passerby alike, quality of life concerns, concerns for personhood, property safety concerns, having dispensaries placed in our neighborhoods next to our children and families is completely against what the citizens of Costa Mesa voted on. The Master Circle is not your ordinary street, and the residents have legitimate concerns. There are numerous existing problems in the area. We are the eyes and ears of what goes on in our neighborhood, and we're putting the city of Costa Mesa on notice of the issues that currently exist, and it will worsen as a result of you granting this application. As such, we plead that the councilmen weigh the pros and cons of this application, which we have already pointed out several times. Please--
Thank you, ma'am, very much for your comments. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Shelley Walsh, and I did attend the meet and greet that Sean Maddox and Andy Singh held for the neighbors at the site. And I asked them, point blank, would you want this in your backyard? And they were dead silent. They didn't even respond. They couldn't. They didn't. They couldn't even fake that they'd say that they'd, they'd live behind their own retail storefront just sixty-eight feet from the, from the homes. I've been a resident owner on the Master Circle for 22 years. I started walking the neighborhood block of forty-nine homes during the 2020 pandemic and still do. I've met nearly everyone, and I've discovered we're a really tight-knit group. I often walk with Jackie, who's ninety, and her dog Archie. She's been a resident for forty-nine years. Our neighborhood is a sanctuary where our children play. We are super diverse, culture, in culture, age, professions, you name it. We have vulnerable populations, dozens of childrens, dozens of seniors, and mental health transitional living home that's under half, one thousand feet away. And I've got crime slides, so if you could bring up my crime slides and pause my time. I sent them in today before noon. I'm gonna pause my time.
Staff, do we have visuals?
I sent them in. One might have gotten, not gone through, but two did.
And staff, have you had a chance to review them prior to the meeting?
I received an email from Anna saying that one of them was, you know, so I resent it. Okay, great.
Okay, is that it? Okay, very good.
Restart my time now?
Yep.
Okay, great. So this slide here, it says that we found that neighborhoods with one or more medical recreational dispensaries saw increased crime rates that were between 26 and, and 1,452% higher than in neighborhoods without any commercial marijuana. Next slide. Another slide. Okay, great. Over the, this is from the LAPD, and they, and this is recent. This is January 2021 through February 2022. Over the past four months, there have been more reports of robberies, burglaries, assault with a deadly weapon, and other crimes of the Los Angeles dispensaries than during any other stretch since cannabis became available to retail sale four years ago. In the month of February, there were fourteen reported crimes, the highest ever since 2018, and had ten crimes while November and December had eight each in previous years. The average monthly number of crimes never reached five. So a great question is, yeah, let's say there is a robbery, because they're not federally insured, and the product is the cash, which is mostly all cash, and, and all product, and they're gonna jump into my neighbor's yards, and they're, you know, they're gonna get away, and we're gonna have a hostage situation, or people dying and bad things happening. Do you have another slide? Great. This one here is basically adjacent areas saw about 84% property crimes per year than neighborhoods without a nearby marijuana store. The results show that legal marijuana sales come with a cost, and the cost could be human lives. And we, we have a sanctuary in our neighborhood, and this is what, why we bought there, and this is what we enjoy, and we're entitled to our enjoyment and our freedom. And I wanna see us live our happy lives like we have been. So I vehemently oppose this cannabis store.
Okay, ma'am, thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the time tonight. My name is Scott Norville. I'm a resident of the Eastside Costa Mesa District, and a proud one. I'm also an advocate for the licensed cannabis industry. One of the things that I wanted to highlight this evening is that-- One of the things that I wanted to highlight this evening is that historically, in the absence of having licensed cannabis retail in Costa Mesa, the Triangle neighborhood in particular lining Harbor Boulevard, lining Newport Boulevard, we've had illegal dispensaries operating for over a decade now. In my opinion, though, the concerns that have been raised tonight by a lot of the residents are indeed valid, and I think that they are nuanced compared to the concerns we should have about unlicensed dispensaries operating in our community. That's all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm John Peterson. I'm the newest resident for the Master Circle at 1118. I also attended the meeting. I also was not satisfied. Apologies if I'm a bit redundant, but, you know, having this new building with tons of security doesn't make me feel safer. It's basically an attractive nuisance, right? It says, I have a dangerous product, I'm worried about people breaking in and I have to live next to it. I don't have any of that security. I feel exposed, kind of reiterating what everybody else said. Again, I know they mentioned the fact that we're by the airport and the 55, but it's very different, that noise, it's ambient versus having someone close the door, you know, five, 10 feet from you, and that's all night till 10:00 PM. Enjoying your backyard will basically become impossible. There will be additional light and additional disruption. As I said, I just bought my property. I would not consider buying this property if I knew there was going to be a dispensary there. It will absolutely negatively impact the value from a financial perspective and also from a personal enjoyment perspective. I've not been satisfied with their mitigation strategy. I don't think it effectively addresses our concerns. Obviously, people will still continue to park in our neighborhood. It will be a nightmare. You'll be walking around with strangers. You're going to want to lock your house. You won't feel safe. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir, for your comments. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Chairman, may I have the slide showing the site map with the C1? Could we possibly put those back up? There you go. Thank you. That'll reflect my comment. I am Ray Markley. I am the owner of the adjacent office building. Bought it in 2004, one of the first owners of, there's an association of office buildings there. And as such, we have already certain traffic issues with regard to Newport Boulevard. The driveway, again, I'm reflecting the current owner, Tim Taber, that driveway is narrow right after an intersection and many people miss that and come into my private property. It's not a Master Circle, obviously, it's public street. Comes into my private property and we even have a U-turn on the property or they try to park and infringe, of course, I only have, you know, 40 parking spaces for my employees. And so there's infringement of our parking, let alone next door. And as such, then those folks who park there then seek to go and trample through a hedge to try and get to the next property. So there's no way that you can set up a security guard system on 1072 and somehow have them tell cars in my personal private property to come and reverse somehow and get over back to 1072. It's already an issue. It's exacerbated by running up to 300 cars a day through that property. In addition to that, most of the traffic will be after hours. Office hours with a sedate office staff are generally there between the hours of 8 to 5. This operation approximately 7 o'clock starts, I guess deliveries, whatever, and it runs up to 10:00 PM. Understandably, the customer audience will likely come after hours. So as such, we expect a number of cars to seek to park in our parking lot because obviously it's also confusing. If you have 70, if you have 72% of the parking consumed by only 30% occupancy, the math's upside down. And so the challenge really is seeking of trying to find parking at an excessively, you know, later in the day congested parking area. Traffic and parking on private property makes us offensive, as well as the other things that are listed here. I don't need to go through those. I agree with the homeowners with Master Circle, with whom we have very good relationship. Taken all of us office building owners, a long time to settle that down ourselves, and I think we've been excellent neighbors to that, and now it's being disturbed. Thank you. I'm Ray Markley again, 1120 Bristol Street. I'm right next door and it's in the picture. You can see how close my building is to this operation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, Charles Clark here, 125 The Master Circle. A lot of good points. I'll try to just touch on about four here. So for traffic, you know, my understanding is that a full traffic impact survey has yet to be performed, which, you know, if true, is concerning. As us residents can tell you and perhaps Commissioner Erith, who's not here, could attest to, you know, our stretch of Newport Boulevard can be super dangerous. Due to the long stretch of road, which can be conducive to speeding, and then the blind turn leading into our neighborhood and the subject property, you know, we're regularly very close to being rear-ended there. And, you know, generally, poor city planning has led to a dangerous situation. Why does this matter? This isn't new. This is existing, right? Well, I guess what my worry is, is that, you know, this is a residential street. These are people who live in Eastside Costa Mesa who are leaving. It's a one-way street, right? Now you're going to be introducing commercial traffic into our neighborhood, into our homes, and I can't imagine that that would make a dangerous situation any better. Workability or walkability, I should say. So Costa Mesa has spent a considerable amount of money investing in the walkability of the neighborhood. For instance, just look at the bike lanes that were recently added to Bristol Street or look at the sidewalk refurbishment that was done on Mesa Drive. Two adjacent streets just to our property, right? You know, I can say that the city has spent a lot of time and money refurbishing the walkability, and I can't imagine that you adding a higher impact onto the streets will make that any better, which is sad because I commute regularly on Bristol Street every day and I can say I see more and more pedestrians and more and more walkers. So I'm not sure if we're taking a step back on some of your already established initiatives, okay? The next is noise. I mean, yeah, let's just be honest, like, the current businesses in the area generally close at 6:00 PM and per the application, they're lightly visited. I think it said 33% of the parking is used. And my understanding is that the proposal would have a business open from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week? Yeah, just going to be noisy. It already sucks having the airplanes. It sucks having the 55 there and the 73. Let's just throw 300 cars a day on there. I don't know, that doesn't seem right. Property value? Yeah, let's be frank, this isn't entirely altruistic, right? You know, we're almost all homeowners here who are saying, no, we don't want it. I'm a homeowner. I can't imagine, and just being blunt here, that anyone or any prospective home buyer would want a cannabis dispensary right outside their front door. I mean, just, yeah, it's just common sense right there. The average American has at least 30% of their wealth in their home. So I would say that if you were to approve this, you'd be putting business in front of the community. That's just how I feel about that. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Geraldine Fabia. I, oh, excuse me, I've never spoken in front of anyone like this before. I live in Costa Mesa. I work here. I've been to many of these City Hall meetings and enjoyed them thoroughly. Seeing the emails that were submitted prior to the cutoff from the Plan 725 meeting surrounding this application were saddening to me. Some of my challenges that I would like to add here are believing that this would attract more people who are homeless is ludicrous, in my opinion. The lighting, increased maintenance, and mere presence of more people will inevitably deter campers. Licensed retail outlets are not danger, are not targets for more crime. Pot shops of the past are not what people believe they are today. We attempted to dismantle this way of thinking during an open house that was held on 8/2 at the proposed location. Sadly, not many people showed up and those who did expressed they simply didn't want us there. Some don't have a problem with cannabis as a whole, but a problem with cannabis right there. I believe this attitude is discriminatory, prejudiced, and wrong. Cannabis industry is one of the most diverse group of amazing people and our presence should be celebrated. City of Costa Mesa has done a phenomenal job navigating this industry. Excuse me. Standing belief that cannabis is a gateway drug stand right depressing and, as we know today, simply not true. I'm going to pass on that one. Biggest thing, I'm a mother of two small children, both under 10 years old. I'm concerned for their safety, just like everyone here is, for their own children. I've worked in the cannabis industry now for over five years. My husband's been in the industry much longer. We've seen the good, bad, and ugly. I worked my way up the ladder over the last handful of years with one goal in mind, to better my family's lives. Prior to my leap into cannabis, my career in insurance spanned 16 years. I didn't need to make this move. I wanted to. Last year in '21, we finally bought a property for our family to grow roots, and that's right here in Costa Mesa. Prior to moving to this city, we spent most of our lives in Huntington Beach, buying a property finally. This was the one, one of the most emotional moments for my family and it's thanks to cannabis it even happened. I just want to also say that I interrupted when Shelley asked the question if anyone would want to live there, and I took over that conversation stating that yes, I absolutely would live there proudly with my children, with my husband, our family, and we would love it. I work in cannabis and I'm proud of it, and it's changed my life, and I think we should be celebrated. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, come forward.
Yes.
Can you pull the micro-- there you go, thanks.
Yes, my name is Brenda Arnett and I'm here to represent our family. We have the property at 102 The Master Circle, which is, I don't know if you can get the attachment, five of the 1072 Bristol Street, the site photos. I just started reviewing this today because there was not a mailer, no knocks on the door. My mom is 99 years old. We've owned the property there for 49 years and things have changed a lot since then. But I am, the quiet enjoyment of our Costa Mesa home will be impacted if this dispensary goes in. The quality of life will diminish, not to mention the environmental impact. The smell alone, the odor from the cannabis dispensary and it just being in our backyard. Our two-bedroom windows face that parking lot. I don't know if they can get the pictures up or not, but we have not been notified. I just found out right after the last city council meeting. So I'm really unhappy about it. I've lived here in Costa Mesa 50 years. I've been a real estate agent for 37 years in Costa Mesa, and I know how this will impact the house on 102 The Master Circle. It's the very second story, very first home that you go into on the Master Circle. And the two-bedroom windows and the lighting is a concern. It's already bright there, but it could be worse. If you need armed guards 24 hours a day, how does that help our house? How does that help our street? Yes, if you put those up, I can show you which one. It's the next page. This is the property I'm talking about. The commercial residential interface facing south. What I worry about too is if cars go in here, they can't find a place to park, they're going to go the wrong way on Newport Boulevard, which is a one-way street. Also, the Master Circle is a one-way in, one-way out street. It's full of families and children, and why this would ever be approved, I can't even imagine. I would just beg the commissioners, the Planning Commission, to not approve this. It's, it just doesn't make sense. So I am totally opposed to it. I hope that you will not let this CUP pass. You know, it's not going to be good for safety. It's not going to be good for a crime in our area. And my mom's 99 years old. She likes to go out and enjoy her garden. And you can see the parking lot--
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Your time's up. Thank you. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for your time. My name is Omid Maruin and I speak to support the position to deny this application. First of all, I understand that the standard is a subjective one as to determining whether this application should, if it were to be granted, would have a materially detrimental effect on the community. Based on what we've heard so far tonight, as well as the prior meeting, I think we can all agree that there is some ounce of objectivity that makes a reasonable person understand the many negative consequences that this application would have. Even if you look, if you look at what the applicant had mentioned, that he, the precautions that the applicant has taken in advance of hearing the community's concerns, he's already attempted to address things that we are concerned about before we even mention them. I forget which councilman it was, but you asked him, what have you, what steps have you taken after you've heard the concerns? And it was next to nothing, based on my interpretation. So they even knew that the site, should it be granted, would have obvious concerns. So I just would like to point that out again. Additionally, I'm glad there are people that support cannabis, but just because you support cannabis doesn't mean you have to support cannabis and our community is harmed at the same time. You can still support cannabis throughout the many other sources available. I was at the OC Fair this past weekend. Many people were smoking cannabis. Additionally, why would you need a security guard if supposedly your statistics states the cannabis makes the community safer? We've also assigned a petition. We've created a petition and in over one week, we have received more than 200 signatures. All the names of these signees has been provided. So I would like to point that as well. Please consider everything we've said. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Hello, my name is Jerry Arnett. I've been a Costa Mesa resident for 39 years and I oppose this application. My 99-year-old mother-in-law lives at 102 The Master Circle, and that is directly on the corner on Newport Boulevard and Master Circle, right behind the parking lot of the building, as we saw in the previous picture. And if this application were to pass, not to mention the additional noise pollution that would cause my 99-year-old mother-in-law much discomfort and it would also change her quality of life. I mean, vandals could jump the fence and be right in her backyard, you know? So, and also, I've never seen a dispensary located right directly behind a residential area. I've only seen them in commercial areas that are, you know, zoned for this type of business. You know, this would cause a lot of vandalism and loitering, and security cameras do not deter vandals. We see on the news every single day, you know, a smash and grab or something else, and all these businesses have cameras and security people and systems. So that's not a deterrent by any means. Also, the property value of the homes that sit right behind this business would drop significantly if this dispensary were to be established in this location. So I do not see how a business like this enhances the city of Costa Mesa, especially with the majority of these customers as dependent users, which have a low moral character. So as to bring these type of customers into our neighborhood would only have a negative impact. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, commissioners. As many of you know, my name is Mike Musali and I've had a manufacturing facility in Costa Mesa in the Measure X zone for four and a half years. And I came tonight to speak on behalf of Andy, Crystal, and Chelsea, Yumi Karma, and Nevada. They have been customers of ours for the last four and a half years. Prior to us opening this business, I had no existing relationship with them. But what I can tell you is that they're some of the sharpest minds in this industry. They've built successful brands from the ground up and they've seen a lot of different challenges. None of these, you know, business, no business, cannabis or not, goes smooth, right? There's always challenges in businesses and they are some of the folks that I would want in this community as business operators that can overcome challenges, that can help with community issues, things like this. So I have personal experience with them and that's why I'm here tonight. A couple other things I wanted to kind of touch on, I heard some of the concerns about this industry being all cash. And things have changed quite a bit. Point in case, most of the transactions between Nevada, Yumi Karma, and my company Seven Leaf are done through a bank. So there's, there is access to banking while it isn't a, you know, a wildfire thing where everybody has it. There is access to banking and I know that they have established relationships there. So that's something that, you know, we don't need to worry about. The other thing I wanted to mention is that, you know, there were some questions about would the character of Mr. Maddox translate to the character of, you know, Mr. Singh and Crystal and Chelsea? And the reality is, is that I've seen them personally take customer questions and requests for their brands and deal with customers one-on-one. And they have brands that go across the whole state of California. They're in over 200, 300 stores. So I've seen it firsthand and-- So I've seen it firsthand and again, just wanted to come speak tonight to them. I think that what they're doing is fantastic and I think they'd be a huge asset to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. My name is Elizabeth Mosier. I live at 169 The Masters Circle. I'm actually speaking on behalf of Tim Boss tonight, who cannot be here. His statement says, "In opposition of 1072 Bristol Street Retail Cannabis." A few years ago, the property at 2134 Newport Boulevard was leased out to a pot shop and distribution group. It was watched by the authorities and one day SWAT teams and a helicopter came and made multiple arrests. My office was located in an apartment complex next door. All the time, I saw people parking in my complex and walked next door to get their pot and come back and smoke it in their cars. In my parking lot where my tenants live, I have families that live in this complex. The homeless are also hanging out in front of the bus bench, hustling the people they were getting pot for to help their habits. It was a beehive of users in our parking lot in the city of Costa Mesa and it was awful. And on a personal note, I would like to thank Mr. Erhardt for coming down Masters Circle. And I would wonder, were you there on a Wednesday? Wednesday is our trash day. We are asked to put our trash cans out at 7:00 a.m. Quite often, our trash is not picked up till much, much later in the afternoon, which means our one designated parking spot per home for visitors is now taken up with trash cans. And sometimes the trash guys don't even come for three weeks. So we have much less parking than a normal neighborhood. And any parking spilling over will impact us very negatively. And also, the business owners for the pot shop say, well, we will, we will prevent people from buying pot and consuming it in their cars. They will not be able to prevent that for anyone parking on our street. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Chelsea Dalton. I am a Costa Mesa resident of four years, living at 2049 Testan Avenue, Costa Mesa, and was born and raised within a few miles of here. I am here today to speak in support of the project proposed for storefront at 1072 Bristol Street. I have been in the cannabis industry for four years, working in various formats from operations, sales, marketing, and I currently manage sales for Nuvada, which is Andy Singh's company, and spend the majority of my time visiting and working with licensed retail storefronts across all of Southern California. When I joined the industry, I had a lot of the same reservations as those on the opposing side did. I quickly learned how far off those misconceptions are. A majority of the customers I come across visiting these storefronts are business people, nurses and doctors coming in their scrubs, elderly patients looking for something to ease the pain, your average soccer mom coming in to find something to help her sleep and so on. The average spend of these customers at the shops I do business with tend to be north of $100 per customer. So the consumers that the opposing side might assume spend time at these shops are very far off. My family and friends used to worry about my safety when visiting cities that aren't as safe as Costa Mesa for work. I quickly learned that I feel safer on any of the property of any dispensary than I do at any restaurant, gas station or business. There is so much protection, security, federally regulated laws that have to be followed by licensed retailers. It is super, it's, it's followed very closely by federally. The same safety will be true for the retailers coming to Costa Mesa. It makes me feel happy and at ease knowing that my family, friends, neighbors and community will have access to safe, regulated cannabis because the options locally found right now are unfortunately the opposite. I've had the joy of educating those in my community about the benefits of cannabis and having access to one in our city can change things for the better. I also mentioned I work with Andy. I started working with Andy in early 2020. He's the founder of Nuvada, the company I manage sales for. He is my direct supervisor and we are in constant communication. I've had the opportunity to learn a lot about Andy, his family, values and business. Andy is a huge part of my pitch when meeting potential business partners. Speaking about who he is as a person makes it easy because it's so rare to find a businessman that genuinely cares about every aspect and person involved or affected, including those in the community. He's constantly asking if there's anything he can do better. I've never met someone that cares as much as he does about everyone else when it comes to business besides himself. I can confidently say he wouldn't put his name on a business or start a business that doesn't align with his values or anybody else's values. For Nuvada, his biggest care is for the consumer and customers. In regards to the business at 1072 Bristol Street, his biggest care will be the community around him. I know he will always work with the community to meet their needs. I mentioned earlier that he was a family man and he treats everyone like family. Do the same with the neighboring homes and business and community.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
My name is Susan Gabriel. I have lived at 197 The Masters Circle since December 5th of 1970. So I, I look on this kind of from the long range of all the, the people that I've known. And one of the people that my family is known and very, very close to is the actual owner of the building. And I, I can't quote them because they asked me not to quote them, but they do not support this business. It is being sold. The building is being sold. And it's my understanding, I presume, to this, to the, the interests that are behind this application. And I think we would all be hopelessly naive if we thought that, that they weren't going to use the whole building. We've seen the numbers of how successful this business is supposed to generate a tremendous amount of money, $80,000 a month once it's rolling. And I cannot imagine that they care if they lose all the people who rent upstairs in that building right now. It's a professional building. It is, because of the hours of professional buildings, the light and the noise and all the other aspects of running a business right in the back of our homes has always been compatible. And I don't imagine how putting, I imagine a liquor store or a hamburger operation right next to us, I just don't think you would ever let that kind of a business come in. And I think this is too much retail and too little compatible neighborhood, you know, definition of commercial.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Shelby. I work for Yumi Karma as Trade Marketing Manager. Our company is women-owned and we're very fortunate, we've, we're very fortunate to have been granted the first manufacturing license in Costa Mesa that we worked very hard for. I was actually born and raised in Palm Springs. We have tons of legal dispensaries in that area and it's done an amazing thing for growth in the community. Working in the cannabis community has granted me the opportunity of being able to move, live and work here in Costa Mesa, which is a dream come true for me to live in OC. Our community, our company has been involved in the Costa Mesa Chamber of Commerce and I'm very lucky to get to know the community in this way. We have healthcare benefits, paid vacation and sick time. We were able to work during the pandemic because cannabis business was deemed essential. I love working in this industry because cannabis has helped so many people improve their lives, including mine. And I'm grateful to share the knowledge of its benefits with others in order to help everyone's daily life. We would like for the residents of Costa Mesa to have safe access to their cannabis products. These products can be medicine for most. People rely on our products to help them with anxiety, depression, appetite, sleep, pain, and the list goes on. Cannabis is also a great way for people to be connected and share common interests. Cannabis retail does not allow for indecent situations to occur. We have already talked about all the security that we're going to have and we have families too, and we really want to make sure everyone's going to be just as safe as we want our families to be. I implore everyone to learn of the strict guidelines that we must adhere to by the state and the city. I hope the city makes a beneficial choice to allow cannabis retail for its upstanding residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. We've been here before together. As you well know, I've been in this city for 75 years. The way The Masters Circle was set up was by an illegal lunch between Mr. Bucola and the then city commission. Now, we have uneven driveways, we have limited parking, we have zero lot lanes. Now, you're trying to put a pot shop at the corner of our street. Do you have any idea the illegalities that belong in this? Between the martini lunches that seem to go on between the city and developers and what you're doing to the community is kind of beyond imagination. I would have thought since the day of Bucola, things would be a little more regimented and more careful to the residents involved. But apparently, you don't seem to care even with this community. So as far as I am concerned, this shouldn't ever, ever, ever be allowed. And yes, I am the captain and gave him a hard time at the meet and greet. And the meet and greet, they said, oh, well, my family's going to buy the building and I'm going to have an office upstairs. I'm a partner in the pot business. That in itself is illegal. So I'm a little confused if you allow this to go through. That's all I'm going to say.
Okay. Thank you, sir, very much. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Hi there. I've never spoke--
Tori, take your time.
Yep.
You don't bite.
My point is, I'll make it short and sweet. I've been on The Masters Circle at 150 for eight years, me and my girlfriend. We've already had a police chase go through our backyard three years ago, apprehended at 2:00 in the morning. So my door's getting banged on by the police because someone's coming through our backyard. And what was there back there was, it was, it was a pot pipe. So he was running from the police. He went through our backyard, dogs chasing. It was terrible. So my point is, the, the street is dangerous to get out of. Someone skewed, making a left-hand turn on head-on traffic, it's going to be bad. I've already been, it's taken part to like at least 12 different times, someone's going down the wrong way of the road on Newport Boulevard. It's scary. And then last, I just, you know, I know you live in Laguna Beach, you wouldn't want this in your backyard. You wouldn't. And they, and they won't take you there either.
Sir, could you please address the commission?
Yeah, yeah. So my point is, these people that are proposing this, they don't want it in their backyard. They just don't put it in ours. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Good evening. Go ahead.
Name's Dave Walker. Owned a property on Masters Circle for the last 17 years. Very unique street. When you come off Newport Boulevard, you have to go very, very slow. There's kids in the first few houses, lots of them on bikes constantly around the corner. You have to drive literally like five miles an hour on the street. You have to be very aware of that. People from out of the area that are going to the shop are not going to know that. And we see that. Every time I see somebody speeding, it's not somebody that knows the street and we're going to get a lot of that now. People will go flying, they don't even know it's a cul-de-sac. They will drive very fast. Very concerning for me when I see little kids in the street. Parents are always out there trying, you know, in these cars and we're yelling at them, "Slow down." Couple of other things, you know, the rehab house that we've already talked about, homeless issue is big. We've had to call the cops many times on Newport Boulevard. You know, it's very convenient. I would imagine most of them like marijuana and they would probably be going over there. My guess, probably make some money betting on that one. The 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. is extremely concerning. I don't even know why this even is a consideration so close to homes. It's, it's beyond, I, I just don't understand. The wholesale business, to me, would be a target for robbery, wholesale business. You have product. Whether you have cash or not, doesn't matter. You've got product, a large amount of product in a building that people know about. So yeah, you're going to have cash in the business and you're going to have wholesale. That's a big problem. The property values is a big concern for me. Our property values aren't going to increase because the cannabis shop's there. So that's about all I, oh, here, a very important thing. So 100 cars per thousand feet, we've got 3,300 feet that are being used for business. So that's 330 cars a day. I don't know if it was approved for over 330 cars a day. And 330, we're used to about 15 cars a day. It's an office building. Weekends, no cars. 15 cars during the business week. Now we've got 330 daily versus 15. And we're going past 5:00. It's, it's, the neighborhood wasn't set up like this. It's going to be, it's going to be a nightmare. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Vida Mohyan. I live in 193 Masters Circle. I'm not good at general speaking, but it brings me to mention some of the point. I'm a real estate agent for more than 20 years. And one of the things that made me to purchase a property in 193 Masters Circle, even though I know there are some negative point like being close to the freeway or airport, the living in the cul-de-sac and staying in the peaceful environment was very painful for me. And since, and I, I against to approve all this dispensary because that causing, not even bring the property value for whole neighborhood, it will bring, we will lose our safetiness, our peace, our comfort, and it will cause the more traffic in the city, causing lots of accidents, crime in the neighborhood. I drive every day and many, many times I see so many cars that they are driving against Newport Drive because we are one-way road. And if you city approve this business, the causing of accident at that will be much more increased. And then people, our neighborhood will face to the city that they approve this because it doesn't make sense. Because the people that shop from this dispensary, they are not normal people. They are rushed to get and shop and, you know, goes away. And I believe this is not the right decision, not for our neighborhood, for entire Costa Mesa city and safety of life.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, this, unless there's anyone else that will speak, this will be our last speaker unless we go to Zoom and telephone. So if you want to come up, please come up to the podium. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Yeah. How are you? Just one word comes to mind each time I hear what's going on. It's wishful thinking. I mean, Mr. Maddox, he sent me an email. I've got four properties there. We're all professionals, we're all physicians. And the fact that we're not paying attention, like he's like, one of his points was, well, it's not regulated that there's a school bus stop there. It doesn't pertain. When I, when I voted for the Measure Q, the biggest thing that was important to me, it was protect neighborhoods and children. I don't see that happening here. I mean, he can't even say he can do that. I mean, you're going to have people, regardless of what anybody says, parking on our street. They're going to consume in our street. The children are going to see it and let alone, God knows what could happen. I mean, I hear everybody who was for it, they all work for the guy. I mean, this is ludicrous. I mean, yeah, of course, if you're paying me, why wouldn't I come talk? But this is, this just makes no sense to me. The other thing that has sort of shocked me is the fact that the staff is so friendly. Oh, we know you, Mr. Maddox. I mean, what is this deal? I mean, it seems like it's, there's this interest here that I should be aware of? I didn't know that. But what's, what's more concerning is there's a park. Yeah, it might be a little bit more than 1,000 feet, but my kids, you know, we go there, like friends of mine, they take their, their dogs down there. You can't do that walk any longer. However this goes, I don't know how it's going to go. Really doesn't change my mind. I mean, I'm going to appeal it and then I'll appeal it again and I'll just take them to court because this cannot happen. It just, that's how it comes down to it. It's my neighborhood. My mom lives there, my brother lives there, my sister's children lives there. I've got great neighbors. We have a Fourth of July that we all get together. I mean, you should take the-- I mean, you should take the time as commissioners, like one commissioner's gone there, another's gone there. You'll see it's a close-knit community. There are a lot of kids. There's growing people. I mean, people are coming, they're young, people are looking to have children there. So again, wishful thinking. Mr. Maddox, fantastic. Mr. Singh sends an attached letter condescending to me, basically. Like, but this is already approved. This is already zoned. I look on the website, and I see that the staff already says, "We recommend it." I mean, that just makes no sense to me. And basically, it makes me think that, well, is this the same thing that happened in Anaheim? Where, you know, there's somebody here getting paid? Is somebody getting, you know, fed something here? It actually makes me question this. And like I said, I've already seeked legal counsel. I'm happy to go down the nine yards. Luckily, I am very successful as well. I've been here 20-plus years in my business. So I have the backbone to like, to take this all the way. But I do urge you folks to say no. This makes no sense. The Master Circle is a very unique situation. It's unique in every...
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
There you go. Hi, I'm Ellen Walker. I am a 17-year resident on owner on Master Circle. And I am just so impressed with all of my team and family on Master Circle. You did an amazing job tonight because we're all united on this. And it's not about, we're not against the cannabis industry. We're just this location. It's all it's about. And I know now the city has put a lot of thought into this. There's been a lot of research that, when this all began, I guess in 2020 with Measure Q. So I just, I've been doing a lot of research, and I came across a study that's actually posted on your site that was a survey that was done back in June, June 29th through July 8th of 2020. And I found it interesting because it's still there. And a couple of highlights on the slide. First of all, was one discussing shallen ordinance permitting, regulating, and taxing the retail sale and delivery of cannabis, limiting the number and locations of cannabis establishments to protect neighborhoods, schools, children, imposing a grocery sales tax, blah, blah, blah. But neighborhoods was mentioned there. This is when you were doing the survey. And I, by the way, wasn't called on the survey. I wish I was. One of the, another key point was, are you in favor or not of prohibiting the operation of cannabis businesses in any residential zone? 66% agreed, no, we're not in favor of that. Another point, limiting the hours of operation for cannabis businesses so they cannot be open at night. 64% agreed, we do not want them open at night. Another point, limiting the number of cannabis businesses to no more than 10 citywide. 56%, yes, we do, yes, no, we don't want that. And then another key point, limiting the number of cannabis businesses to no more than seven citywide was 53% in favor of not having that happen. So one of my questions back to the city is, I know that two have already been approved. And they're only two miles from our house. One's on Harbor Boulevard, another one down on Newport Boulevard. So we already have two that are in place. So if I wanted to go get pot today, or whenever it opens, I can just go two miles down the street, which I go to anyway. But my question is to the city is, how many are, is in the works, how many will be approved for Costa Mesa? Can we talk about that?
So I can't, I can tell you we've got a lot of applications, but each one is unique unto itself, and each one deserves an unbiased public hearing. So I couldn't tell you how many are ultimately going to get approved.
Because I see the list, and it says 50, 50-plus right now, and that's dated as of January. It hasn't been updated.
Could be a little bit more, but I couldn't tell you how many they're going to be ultimately because each one of those deserve a fair hearing.
And then the other question I have before we go is, today we've been talking about this one CUP. What is the story with OC Prime Delivery that's in the same address?
I'll ask staff.
Same address, suite 201 and 203, we haven't talked about that. And that was one of my questions to clarify tonight. Are we talking about the CUP for the both? I'm hearing it's two different ones.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Your time's up. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Linda Rank. I will keep it very short. I'm not comfortable speaking. I want to thank very much Mr. Earnhardt, or how do you say, Erath, for coming to our neighborhood. I would, I agree with everything my fine neighbors have said. I would also like to add that when you, we leave our street, it's just a cul-de-sac. Only way to go, right on Newport Boulevard. If we leave and to go to work in the day, we're already waiting and waiting and waiting and waiting for a spot to open up, to make our right-hand turn, to get out. Increased traffic's going to not only increase accidents, it's also going to not get us to work on time. We've had the incident with somebody climbing from the office parking lots to, into our backyard. The police had to come and arrest them. That was a huge issue. I know that things like that are going to increase. I had, oh, and another point is, I also would not feel that it's appropriate or comfortable, or it would also destroy the quiet enjoyment of my backyard if a gas station or a designer handbag shop, any kind of retail shop that's open till 10:00 p.m. in my backyard. It's not appropriate in a backyard of a residential neighborhood. I want to sit outside in my backyard and enjoy my fire pit. I want to, it will be so disruptive. And I beg you to please deny this petition. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anna, do we have anyone on Zoom who wishes to speak to this item?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chairman. Can the caller ending in 937, you may provide your public comment?
Thank you. Hello, my name is Colectium. I want to first thank the Planning Commission for granting us the continuance. My neighbors, our community, have come together to constructively engage in opposition to the application to open a cannabis dispensary at 107 Bristol Street. The insidious appeal by Mr. Singh, Mr. Kabor, and his organization to the dissolution that opening up the dispensary creates no harm to the neighborhood, or as he states, to the four homes behind this building. Well, there are 49 homes, and all of us will be affected. Their promise of armed security guards, really good air filters, and covers on their outdoor lights would be good enough for us. Well, it isn't. In the application, he states that the parking is sufficient for the mega dispensary since the allotted spots were already there and it is legal, non-conforming. That type of response does not solve any problems. Working in harmony with the community is not a one-legged dance. These traffic studies are done by staff. No real third-party, unbiased reports. There's a lot of opinions. In the application, it does not mention the amount of daily, weekly cash transactions or the amount of bulk products being delivered or received. The high-value items and large amounts of cash make it a target for violent crime. I believe all of these items are a major concern and should be vetted before any approval is given. Before you take this momentous step and open the floodgates to all future potential marijuana dispensary applications, and there are many, I ask that you pause and judiciously consider the consequences of your decision to allow a dispensary next door to residential homes. Just because it is not specifically written in the how-to handbook doesn't mean it's right. I ask that you take into consideration not just the laws, but how those laws affect the citizens. Positive growth, safe infrastructure with absolute priority to quality of life and public safety is what all of us as residents of Costa Mesa have the right to want. I ask that you stand up and do the right thing. You may lose the support of the elite, but you will gain the support of the people. Please do not let the profits of a few be prioritized over the welfare of the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anna, anyone else?
Cassius Rutherford, you may provide your public comment.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. I didn't want to comment either way on this, but I live right up the street, so I felt inclined to just share observations. My brother works at Gonal Lumber.
Mr. Rutherford, are you, did we lose you?
Oops, sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioners. My brother works across the street at Gonal Lumber. I live right up the street. I just wanted to share some observations. I've really appreciated the investment of the city in this neighborhood, creating protected bike lanes along Bristol Street. That's been a wonderful addition to the neighborhood. It might, you know, I'm not a frequent visitor of cannabis dispensaries, but you know, the few I've visited in Santa Ana, you know, it's a lot of Lexus, Mercedes, BMWs in the parking lot. That's just been an observation. So in this particular location, I believe, used to be actually a campaign office because I went there myself many times. So I don't know if that was a huge nuisance on the neighborhood or if that was particularly disruptive. I did go there at many hours of the day and night. I didn't miss the turn, and you know, it seems pretty straightforward with two entrances either way. It's pretty easy to get to, particularly via bicycle. Yeah, I've walked and biked the area many times, especially with the addition of the new bicycle lanes. It's made it easier to get down the street. So just wanted to share those observations as somebody that lives up the street.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else?
David Martinez, you may provide your public comment.
Mr. Martinez, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm currently at the subject property. I would just like to note that. And I'd want to mainly talk about transportation. But I'll note for the public safety portion that as public comments have started since I've been here, no less than three police cars have driven by. So it's, to me, it feels like quite a safe area. Regarding transportation, I take issue with the staff report, not with the applicant, saying that this area is underparked. I'm just going around the parking lot, like at this time, sure, it's not used right now, but there's no cars here. The staff report mentions the parking study, which says that it's mostly, it's 60% unused at peak hours. So I don't see really how parking is an issue here. That just doesn't make any sense to me. And really, I think that's a problem with our codes that we should change in the future. But yeah, parking is not an issue here. If, and to address another point, if people have an issue with circulation or are nervous about wrong-way drivers up Newport Boulevard or with increased car traffic on Newport Boulevard, then another option would be to close down the driveway that's on Newport Boulevard and have everyone exit on Bristol. That's just something I'd like to throw out there. And finally, I do appreciate the addition of, I believe, another bicycle rack since there's already one here that I can see, especially since we're trying to improve our active transportation network in the city. Last thing I'll add is, I just wish that there were better pedestrian access to the building in general since it's kind of hard to get in here if you're walking up. I do take issue with the applicant saying that anyone walking down Newport Boulevard will have their ID checked if they're coming to the business. That doesn't make any sense. We're trying to promote active transportation. People should be allowed to walk through this business. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other Zoom participants or telephone callers?
No, there is not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we'll close the public comment. I will ask Mr. Maddox to come back up if he has some clarifying points or rebuttal comments he wishes to make. I'm going to have Mr. Singh come up with me as well, so you guys can hear from him and not just me this afternoon. Okay.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for having me up here. I would be very happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions of the applicant, Mr. Singh? Mr. Singh, let me ask you a quick question. In terms of security, will your security guards be armed?
Well, the city mandates them to be armed, and they shall. But we would leave that at the city's discretion. A lot of retailers currently do not have armed, but a lot do as well. I would leave it at the discretion of the city of what they're comfortable with.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Drapkin, do we, is armed security part of the ordinance requirement? I don't think it is.
Security guards are not required to be armed. At one point, Measure X, with our manufacturing and distribution, there was a condition of approval, but it was removed after it was found that there was not an increase in crime.
Okay. So Commissioners, no questions of Mr. Singh? Commissioner Toller?
Yeah, just real quick, it's proposed to stay open till 10:00 p.m. Can you speak as to why? Why open so late?
Well, I think that the ordinance enabled us to have it open till 10:00 p.m. And traditionally, almost all retailers in the state are open till 10:00 p.m. as well, as permitted by state law as well. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
No worries.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, so we'll close the public hearing. And I'll bring it back to the Commission to see if they have any final questions of staff or if there are any motions. If you have a motion, please hit your make motion button on your panel. Okay, Commissioner Vivar.
Hi, thank you, sir. Just one quick question. I believe staff earlier mentioned something about a separate application for the second floor of this building. Is that, is that a Measure Q retail application for that?
There is a totally separate application with different owners for a delivery-only use. The application before us tonight is for the storefront with delivery. And they are partnering with a current Measure X business, Yami Karma, that's based in Costa Mesa. So that's why this application is before you tonight. Applications that are not partnering with Costa Mesa businesses, you know, are further back in the process. So I don't know when that would make it to a public hearing.
Ma'am, no, 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 we're not doing that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so the chair's going to make a motion, and if there's a second, I'll explain. But the chair moves to deny Application 21-27. Is there a second? Okay, there's a second by Commissioner Zick. So I will go ahead and make my comments on the motion. So this has nothing to do with the operator at all. I believe you probably run a very professional outfit, and you probably do it safely and do it in a very community-sensitive way. Indeed, the property is zoned commercial that allows this use. But a location's important, and I don't think this is a good location. If you look at the uses along this corridor, and that C1 corridor from the subject property down to, let's say, Acapulco Restaurant, all those uses save for Acapulco close at 7:00 p.m. The office buildings probably close a little bit earlier. Acapulco closes at 10:00. However, it's buffered by extra storage. So the extra storage structures between Acapulco and the residence of Master Circle, there's a good buffer there. And public access to extra storage closes at 7:00 p.m. So from my perspective, it's a brand-new use, save for maybe firearms. It's the most regulated use in California, I'm sure. And it's brand-new, and we're being asked to locate this particular business right up against a residential community without really knowing the impacts. So when I look at the code, and the code tells me I have to make certain findings to approve an application. I can't make the finding. And this is, and this is why these are discretionary approvals, because they require some discretion and some interpretation of what materially detrimental to other properties means. But I cannot make the finding that the proposed development or use is substantially compatible with developments in the same general area and would not be materially... and would not be materially detrimental to other properties within the area. And I can't make that finding, because like I said, it's a brand-new use of a heavy-regulated industry. And they're asking for hours that no other use save for the Acapulco restaurant has. And so I have real concerns about the level of activity and the level of traffic going in and out of the store. Not that it's gonna be bad, but it's gonna be noticeable, cheek-to-jowl against people's backyards and their bedroom windows. So unfortunately, I just think, in my personal opinion, is the applicant chose the wrong location. I think they probably perfectly find business. I just think the location is wrong. So that's why I made the motion. Vice Chair Zick, do you want to comment on the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I agree with everything you said. In some respects, it feels like all of the precautions and conditions of approval, although well-written and well-intended, feel like they shoehorn a use into a location that really isn't suitable for this use. One of the findings says that this development needs to be substantially compatible. Not substantially tolerable. Could you tolerate this? I'm sure many of you would say, no, I can't even tolerate it. But it doesn't say this should be tolerable. It says it should be compatible. To me, compatible is a key word in describing the finding here. I can't find that this is compatible, materially detrimental. We talk about quiet enjoyment. You know, everybody's home is their castle. I don't care where you live, your home is your castle. That's the place where you go to escape from everything. And in some respects, it's possible that you're, don't take offense to this, spoiled by being next to buildings that have business occupants who leave at the end of the day around 5:00 or 6:00 PM. And on the weekends, they're probably not there or in very small numbers of people that maybe need to work over the weekend. You get to enjoy your property. It's peace and quiet for you and your family and your kids. With this use, up until 10:00 PM every single night, seven days a week, up to 10:00 PM, car doors opening, closing, engines starting, cars driving away. I mean, these are the kind of noises that get people to look out their window and go, what's happening in my neighborhood? What's happening over the wall behind my backyard? That's not quiet enjoyment. Could we say, well, we're gonna recommend hours of approval? You've got to close by 6:00 PM. Well, that's not fair to the business. And in trying to do that, I think it's just another effort to shoehorn an incompatible use next to this residential community. One of the things I think about a lot when we have development approvals in front of us, and we're talking about people that are impacted, whether it's traffic or the kinds of impacts you all are concerned about. What goes through my mind is that these impacts are something that you will have to contend with the rest of your life. Not for a business cycle, not while they do their thing and maybe expand and need more space and move. No, you are gonna have to contend with this the rest of your life. And I think seriously about all development applications that come before us. And I look at it through that prism. When this thing is built, is it something that adds to our community and does not have the kind of impacts that somebody will have to endure for the rest of their life? This one just doesn't get across that bar. So I will not be recommending approval.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Erath, any comments on the motion? Okay, Commissioner Vivar?
Yes, sir. I do have been thinking about this very seriously. I've read over the land use element, the entire thing, the community element, the entire thing. And the land use element, Chapter 3 or Section 3, is full of language about what it means to protect the nature of the neighborhoods in our communities in the city of Costa Mesa. And Land Use Element LU 3.1 does in fact talk about stabilized neighborhoods and limiting impact to them by a potentially disruptive use. Land Use Element LU 3.8 talks about compatibility of new development with the existing character of the neighborhood and surrounding development. I don't see heavy-use retail types in the surrounding area. I don't see other businesses closing until 10:00 PM in the area as well. And Land Use Element LU 3.10 also talks about the limiting the impact of businesses to the privacy and tranquility of people's homes and neighborhoods. So I think that the Land Use Element speaks very, very strongly as to what it means to protect communities and neighborhoods. And the fact that, I was keeping count, but I lost count, but it would seem to me that 90% of the residents in the Master Circle were here tonight. Not one resident of the Master Circle was here and said, sure, I wanted in my neighborhood, I don't care. Not one. And so the fact that the entire neighborhood came together and came and spoke about this speaks volumes. So I too approve the motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Rojas, any comments on the motion?
Only to echo what you were saying, that I know the applicant has been very responsible. I appreciate your intention to be a good neighbor and whatnot, but I just think I'm gonna support the motion as it is because of the items that have already been discussed.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Toller? Any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's see, I have some thoughts on this. We approved this Measure Q by vote. We adopted the ordinance in a transparent way at Planning Commission and City Council. And there's a map. And people are investing in their business in good faith based on the ordinance, on the map. I think the Chair is totally right in going back to the findings and thinking, can we, can we say that this is not gonna be materially detrimental? I worry about consistency. We're gonna have a lot of these applications that comply with the map. We have a lot of single-family homes with, frankly, wealthy homeowners next door. Are we gonna do the same thing when there's apartments next door? That's my, that's my struggle. Am I gonna be able, am I gonna be denying this when it's next to anybody that lives there? Anybody that lives within, what, 50 feet, 200 feet? What is it? It's in our heads, it's not real. So I don't know what to go off of. It's kind of a technical struggle I'm having. We all want the same thing. Everybody that lives here, I have kids. We don't have a park nearby. My street is where we play. We've been broken into in our house, our car, mailbox. We struggle with the same thing. I think there's a lot of misunderstanding as to the kinds of businesses that are coming in, these sorts of legal dispensaries, this new wave under these new approvals, and what a lot of people have in their imaginations. I see, I scan all these public comments that come in, and you see seedy businesses are gonna follow. Seedy people are gonna come in and do seedy things. Violence, driving the wrong way, slamming their doors, looking at our children. I don't, I agree with Mr. Chair. We don't know yet. I wish we were two years down the road and three or four of them were open in town already and we could point to them. We could do that with other cities. We could say, hey, here's some legal ones that you could go visit. Go see what they're like. They're not as bad as we're imagining. Odor. There's an idea that the whole neighborhood's gonna smell like marijuana. We've toured these places. We've been in these, you don't even smell marijuana inside. I think that's a misunderstanding. That's a valid concern, of course. I don't think that's true, though, of these places. I want to recognize that about half of the concerns, or maybe more, had to do with cars. And I couldn't agree more. Cars are the worst. They slam their doors. People leave them all over the place. They crash them into things. They speed. You don't have to convince me. It's a terrible thing. And they create problems that are hard to resolve. Now, we, it's interesting. When we have a lot of projects that come before us, no matter what it is, the conversation almost subconsciously goes back to cars. We're gonna build new homes. Oh, the cars, the traffic, the parking, the reckless driving, the drunk driving, this and that. But what's really being proposed tonight? It's a business. It's a business moving in. It's not a new building. It's a new business. It's a store. It could be a jewelry shop. You know, that would pose a security concern. They could sell the best hot dogs in town. That would cause a lot of, you know, are we gonna be against any business that promises to be very successful? Again, I'm just thinking about consistency, the way we're thinking through this. So there's 70 conditions of approval that'll keep this place. Keep this place in line. With other, with other businesses, we've had conditions of approval where they have to come back to the Planning Commission and report. And we'll check in on them. So I'm really struggling with this. This is a business that wants to come in. They've invested in good faith. I don't think our, these caricatures we've heard tonight, I don't think they're true. I would never entertain the idea of allowing such a thing where people live. But at the end of the day, it comes down to the same thing Mr. Chair said. We just don't know yet. I'm very confident that these things will not be a nuisance to the neighborhood. But I don't know. And I hope we will all know in a year or two. And then we can let these sail through with less of a fuss because then we could just point down the street. But for now, I'll approve, I'll support the motion.
Commissioner Russell, any comments?
Just, I'll make a few short comments. First of all, I want to thank the staff for, it's always good report, and the applicant for their presentation. And what we're saying up here, please don't take it as a reflection. You know, the Yummy Karma people have been good partners. I'm sure you have a really good reputation and you would do a great job. And I hope you, it goes back to the enjoyment. I looked, I walked around the neighborhood and all of the, all of the properties there, businesses, have been designed to be from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. That's the way people purchase their homes. That's what they were expecting. And for us to now say it's okay to have a retail from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM seems kind of unreasonable. And this would be true, I mean, if it was a convenience store, if it was any kind of retail that's open that late. It doesn't matter how hard you work to make it safe. And I, you know, and I agree with Commissioner Toller. I think there's a lot of fear out there about the cannabis industry. And as time goes on, I think these fears are gonna go down. But even if they did everything right, you can't change the fact that there's gonna be deliveries at 7:00 AM. There's gonna be people there at 10 o'clock. Even if they're really quiet, doors are gonna be slammed. People are gonna talk. And I think it's gonna impact the neighborhood's quiet consideration in their backyards and stuff. I have that same concern about our choices in apartments versus single-family dwellings. And this is the first time that this has come up, that we've had a property that wasn't already designated for retail. And for me, that was a consideration. So I'm gonna support your proposal.
Thank you. So I just want to make kind of a closing. Again, our code requires that these applications come before the Planning Commission under a conditional use permit, which is fundamentally a discretionary review of a land use application. Even though the zoning says it's permitted, even though, you know, the land use designation would suggest that it's permitted, the fact that it's a discretionary review means the Planning Commission has an obligation to take in the evidence and figure out, is, in this case, is this the right location for this particular operation? Again, nothing against the owners. But the fact that we have these regulations that add up to 70 conditions of approval and the state pulls these poor folks through a keyhole to set up their business. And, you know, the good news about Costa Mesa is we're probably the most liberal city in California in terms of there are no caps on the amount of retail spaces that we can have. So all's I'm saying is, I think you guys picked a crummy location, but there's more out there, I'm sure. And, you know, there's gonna be opportunity for you to succeed with a retail storefront somewhere else. I just think not here. I just think, my discretion as a Commissioner to make sure, I'm looking after the interests of the folks in the neighborhood. I'm weighing the evidence. I'm weighing that evidence against the findings I have to make. And that evidence tells me I cannot make one of these findings. And so I have to move denial. And so that's why I did what I did. So with that, we will do an electronic vote, Commissioners, on the motion, which is to deny Planning Application 21-27 based on the fact that the maker of the motion cannot make for the findings relative to the proposed development or use is substantially compatible with developments in the same general area and would not be materially detrimental to other properties within the area. So if we could go ahead and vote.
That motion carries 7-0.
Okay, and that decision will be final in seven days unless it's appealed to the City Council. Thank you very much, staff, for all your hard work on that. We will take a 10-minute break and we'll be back at 9:05. 9:05.
I think I could apply it here to this item, but it could be applied to the next item as well. I called Chris Clu and left a message with the intention to communicate, and I never received a returned voicemail.
Okay. Commissioner Vivar?
I had email communication with Jim Fitzpatrick on the item, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Rojas?
None, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Toller?
No, sir.
Commissioner Russell?
I exchanged one email with the applicant's representative.
Okay, Vice Trizik?
Nothing.
Okay, I received an email from the applicant's representative, but was not able to respond. So, Mr. Vialobos, you're on the floor. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Gabriel Vialobos, and I am an Assistant Planner with the Development Services Department. Tonight I'm presenting to you Planning Application 21-17, which is a request for a conditional use permit to establish a retail cannabis dispensary with home delivery service. Per state law, would require a Type 10 license, which would allow for a storefront retailer that has a physical location where cannabis goods are sold. Under the Type 10 license, retail delivery would also be allowed. The name of the proposed storefront would be Marketplace. Retail cannabis uses are allowed in the city pursuant to Measure Q and must first be approved by the city through the steps listed on the following slide. The applicant has proceeded from the pre-application review stage onto the CUP. If the project were to be approved by Planning Commission, the next steps in the process would include applying for building permits, coordinating city inspections, and finally issuance of both a cannabis business permit and a city business license. Existing development on the property consists of an approximately 4,073-square-foot, two-story commercial building with an existing surface parking at the southwest corner of the intersection of Harbor Boulevard and Ponderosa Street. Three other structures exist on-site but are not included as part of this conditional use permit. The proposed storefront with delivery is located at 2845 Harbor Boulevard. The property abuts a car rental and car service center to the north, a used car dealership and collision repair center to the south, another car dealership across Harbor Boulevard to the east, and multifamily residences to the west, approximately 150 feet away. The subject property is Zone C1, which is the local business district commercial zone, and is surrounded by similarly-zoned properties to northeast and south with multifamily residential zone properties to the west. Shown here are some site photos taken on my visit on June 16 of the property, which shows the current condition of the existing building, landscaping, and parking lot. The previous tenant that occupied the site was a used car dealership named Cal Beamers, which has since relocated to another larger location in Costa Mesa. The applicants for Marketplace have proposed renovations to the site, including new landscaping to bring the property into closer conformance with landscape requirements, restriping of the parking lot to bring the site into conformance with the city's parking design standards, as well as improvements to the building itself. Shown here is a current site plan depicting the boundaries of the property and existing buildings on-site. The three buildings located within the same parcel as the proposed location for the cannabis storefront are not included as part of this project. The total floor area ratio for all of the existing buildings on-site meet the current FAR requirements for the type of development. No additional square footage has been proposed as part of this project, and as such, compliance is maintained. The property has three driveway approaches on Harbor Boulevard, Ponderosa Street, and Lemon Street. The driveway approach from Lemon Street has been conditioned to remain closed during business hours, with the exception of deliveries or other necessary site access requirements, such as trash truck circulation. At no time shall this driveway approach be used for customer access. The surface parking lot currently has 89 parking spaces on-site, but shall be redesigned to be in conformance with parking design standards as previously mentioned. Landscaping on-site is currently legal nonconforming and will be brought into closer conformance with current development standards through the proposal. Shown here is a proposed site plan, which depicts the proposed site improvements, such as new parking lots striping and landscaping. The project will decrease the on-site parking from 89 spaces to 75 spaces, which will include five handicap-accessible spaces, six compact spaces, and one bike rack located next to the 565-square-foot office building on-site. The parking requirement for the proposal is currently 17 spaces total. In addition, parking for the other three structures at the general retail ratio would require an additional 16 spaces. With consideration to the proposed business as well as possible future tenants, the property will still be overparked by roughly 40 spaces, and as such, the proposed parking on-site exceeds the minimum requirement. As mentioned previously, other improvements to the site consist of landscaping on-site, which will be upgraded along the street frontage, as well as in the interior portions of the parking lot, to be brought into closer conformance with current landscaping development standards. In addition, there will also be the incorporation of a new trash enclosure on-site. The proposed floor plan includes two major areas, the retail sales area and back-of-house areas. The retail sales area, which is shown in green on the slide above, includes the customer check-in area, public restroom, as well as the general sales area. The remainder of the building would be dedicated towards back-of-the-house areas, shown in red, to support the retail sales operation, as well as the delivery services which are provided. These areas will be separated and accessed only by authorized personnel. The facility includes one public entrance located nearest to Ponderosa Street and an additional access-controlled entrance to be used by employees and for deliveries only. Incoming and outgoing deliveries will be handled in the area labeled "vendor room," and all delivery drivers will have designated parking areas with a pathway that is under camera and is coordinated with security staff prior to arriving on-site. The applicant has provided a detailed business plan, which was evaluated by the city's cannabis consultant. Business plan described the owner's professional experience, proof of capitalization, and day-to-day operations, including retail and delivery operations. The business plan is not attached to the staff report because it contains proprietary information. The applicant has provided professionally-prepared security plan. Costa Mesa's cannabis consultant reviewed it and determined that appropriate security measures were included to address city and state requirements. Topics covered include, but are not limited to, on-site security guards, background checks, and ID badges for every employee, monitors, surveillance cameras, door sensors, and alarm systems, just to name a few. There are also upwards of 50 standard conditions of approval related to Measure Q uses, such as those shown on the slide above. Planning has also incorporated site-specific conditions of approval, including the restriction of customer access via Lemon Street and the termination of ingress and egress onto Harbor if the lease were to break for the adjacent parcel. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to find out the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act per SEQUEL Guidelines, Section 15301. Approve Planning Application 21-17, subject to the conditions of approval. The applicant has also prepared a presentation for the commission tonight. This would include staff's presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay, Mr. Vialobos, thank you very much for your presentation. Commissioner Erath, do you have any questions of staff?
I do, thank you, Chair.
Sure.
And Mr. Vialobos, thank you so much for the presentation. I appreciate it. Let's go ahead and start on page six of the agenda report. I just wanted to get a point of clarification here. Looking at the second bullet point from the bottom, it says, "On-site sales of alcohol or tobacco products and on-site consumption of alcohol, cannabis, and tobacco products is prohibited." I recall that there are some cannabis products that are infused with alcohol. Is that also included in what is not for sale at these businesses?
Commissioner Erath, Nancy Nguyen, Senior Planner, I do want to clarify that per state law, cannabis beverages cannot be infused with alcohol.
Okay, right. If we turn to page 10. It's the top paragraph, middle of the paragraph. It says, "Staff has included Resolution Condition A, Condition of Approval Number 24, which restricts customer use of the driveway access on Lemon Street in consideration of the nearby residential properties." Did staff contemplate also closing off the Ponderosa entrance/exit as well? And just have one point of ingress and egress on Harbor? And if so, why did we not do that?
So, I would say that's a bit of a multifaceted explanation for that. The primary reason being that the entrance on Lemon Street is actually the only one that currently is fenced in and also has a currently existing gate. So, simply put, it's easy to just have the gate closed and maintain what's already there existing. The entrance upon that leads to Ponderosa Street, it's open, and it would really, I would say, detract from the circulation that's available on-site for the parking lot. It's pretty vast, so at least having two access points, I think, was beneficial to circulation on-site. In addition, the driveway approach for Harbor specifically, it's actually located on an adjacent parcel. So, part of our conditions of approval in sort of maintaining ownership of that ingress and egress point was ensuring that the applicants were able to properly lease that and have that available, because without that, it would really only be Ponderosa that would serve the site specifically for ingress and egress. So, it just seemed like the resolution that made the most sense was to close off Lemon, in part due to some of the public comments that we had received in regards to residences and the concerns about traffic, as well as other nuisances that typically come with these types of businesses, so.
Yeah. I appreciate your explanation. I think you probably know, having likely visited the site. I visited the site today as well, in that in exiting the property and going down Ponderosa, I think it would be fairly typical for people who would use this property to just drive through Ponderosa to Baker, because they don't want to do the U-turn on Harbor at Adams, right? So, in consideration of folks living in the neighborhood, I'm fairly certain that they might not want the increased traffic. That's kind of what I'm getting at. So, I might circle back to that later. I was generally curious, and this wasn't anything that was in the agenda report or the executive summary from the applicant, but does this site fall into the housing opportunity sites along Harbor? Just given the, and I'll add to that a little bit if I can, Mr. Drapkin. It's a fairly sizable property, and I think in going back to what we were talking about in our housing element, that we are looking down major corridors to try and develop the additional affordable housing in the city, because that's one of our major goals, right? And I'm curious to know if or when the site was looked at as being a housing opportunity site and why we don't pursue that.
So, that's a good question, and I can definitely, if you give me a minute or two, I can kind of go through some old emails where I have the opportunity sites on the map.
And I have other questions, too, so you can work on it.
So, move on, and I'll get that for you for sure.
Okay, thanks. We'll circle back to that. So, in, I think, I'm going to reserve these other two questions for the applicant, so maybe I am done with questions. You can still get back later, that's fine.
Okay, great, thanks. Commissioner Vivar, do you have questions of staff?
Yes, sir, a few questions. Thank you, staff, for your presentation. Very thorough, as always, just have a couple of questions. So, I still don't really understand what the ownership situation is of the adjacent parcel. So, I understand from the staff report that it's shared parking and access with this site and 2833 Harbor Boulevard, but who actually owns that parcel? Or is it just something that's there, and there's a shared access agreement? What's the deal with that?
So, it is owned by the same property owner that is leasing the property to the applicants. So, the property owner owns both of those parcels, and the applicants have leased both of those parcels, the adjacent parcels, simply for the purpose of using it as ingress and egress to their site, as well as providing additional parking spaces.
Is there a reason that we're sort of okay with them having additional parking spaces, since their project seems to be so overparked?
I would say more than anything, the main issue of concern was having additional points of ingress and egress into the location. So, having that site on, or that driver approach on Harbor, the applicants felt it was beneficial to have that, that they can use that. The parking, I think it's pretty plain to see that. It's not very much of an issue for the specific site, but having the ability to utilize that additional point of ingress, as opposed to just having one off Ponderosa, which, without acquiring that adjacent parcel, would have limited to just the one point of ingress and egress, may have potentially created some potential confusion or possible traffic or circulation issues within the adjacent neighborhood.
Okay, so I understand from the staff report as well that if the lease of the adjacent parcel there were to be terminated, then access would be through Ponderosa. So, I guess, why, if we seem to be okay with access through Ponderosa there, sorry, if we seem to be okay with access to the project through Ponderosa in the case that the lease were to expire or be terminated, why is it that we wouldn't be okay with having the main access through Ponderosa and sort of limiting the driveways along Harbor Boulevard for pedestrian and bicycle safety?
I would say at this point, acquiring the entrance to Harbor was more of a surplus and was a necessity. So, I think part of the reason why the condition was in there was simply because of the fact that if it were to become an issue, then there's a mechanism in place that we could use to, I guess, rescind ingress on Harbor if it were to become an issue.
And will we know somehow if that lease is terminated?
You asked that question one more time. I was digging in on the housing opportunity sites, but I think I can probably help you with it.
No problem.
One more time with the question.
Oh, oh, sure.
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
So, if the applicant were to terminate, or somebody were to terminate that lease of the adjacent parcel, the one that provides access to this project, as well as 2833 Harbor Boulevard, would the city know that that lease would be expired, thus triggering the access point through Ponderosa?
We wouldn't necessarily know. It would be something that we'd have to, per the condition, the applicant is required to tell us.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Within a certain timeframe, or just immediately?
There is a timeframe, and then there's also a timeframe stipulated for when they have to submit plans and then develop the driveway if it's, if any improvements are needed on Ponderosa.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Drapkin. That's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Rojas, any questions of staff?
Just continuing on with Ponderosa. I'm looking at Lemon Street and Harbor, and obviously, Ponderosa is a little bit slightly closer to that, but do you know what the distance is relative to Harbor? Meaning, how much more convenient would it be, kind of speaking to what Commissioner Erath was alluding to, was than any people visiting the site going down Ponderosa and entering more into the residential area? So, that's my main concern, is how much more convenient would it be just to turn on Harbor and prevent any kind of increase of traffic to the residential area there? So, question being a distance question. How much closer is it?
Commissioner Rojas, given that the fact that the property is completely surrounded by the three streets, I don't know if the distance is that relevant. Maybe you can kind of, and maybe I'm missing your question is my thoughts.
Yeah, just a thought is, if you're on Harbor, because Harbor is a pretty busy section right there. So, say I'm a customer visiting here, and I say, "Well, I don't want to deal with Harbor. I want to go to Lemon, trying to find a way to get out of this neighborhood." Like, what I'm thinking in terms of is, I'm looking at Harbor. It's a lot easier to get in and out of there visually, and I don't know what Lemon Street does have. So, I'm just wondering what the distance, how much closer is the Ponderosa? Because I can't see it to scale. I was looking for some scale here, but how much closer would it be?
It looks like, I would say, Lemon Street is probably about, the driveway access along Lemon Street's probably about 100 feet from the corner of Harbor Boulevard.
Okay. All right, that's the only question I had. I'll just continue looking at this map here, but I think I understand the answer I was looking for. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Toller, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also have a driveway question, unless we want to talk about the housing opportunity site? I was kind of curious.
Not a housing opportunity site.
I didn't, I may have missed it in the staff report, but it looks like the driveway on Harbor is proposed to be diminished? Gone from 50 to about 26 feet? Is that proposed to be part of the improvements?
No, there's currently no improvements in place for that specific driveway approach.
Okay, yeah. On the site plan, L1 Landscape Site Plan, it's got a 26-foot driveway there noted, but might be reading it wrong. But that's my only question.
Okay, Commissioner Russell, any questions of staff?
Not at this time, thank you.
Vice Chair, okay. Just have a quick question on the traffic. If I calced right, for the structure, you're about 108 trips per thousand square feet, so that takes us about 432 trips. And then you net out the previous uses' trips, and that takes us under 100? So, we had 432 trips. My math could be wrong, based on the 108 per thousand. We have a 4,037-square-foot building, so I'm figuring 432 trips. And then you subtract the previous trips per use, and you get a net number, and that net number is less than 100?
Correct.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, what is the trip per thousand-square-foot rate for a dealership?
Mr. Chairman, we have staff from Transportation Services who can address those questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Yang.
Hello. The staff found that trip ends for 1,000 square foot for dealership is 27 trip ends per day.
Okay.
Per thousand square foot.
Per thousand square feet?
Yeah.
So, I'm taking that the net trips calculated for the dealership included the other buildings that are not part of this project tonight?
That's correct.
Okay. So, there's a lot more square footage that you made calculations on. Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen. So, Mr. Vialobos, the, so the two parcels in question are owned by the same entity or individual, and the individual's just leasing both parcels to the applicant. There's no reciprocal easement agreements, no, it's just a straight lease that allows them to use that parcel to access the other parcel they're leasing. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, very good. All right, no other questions from me. We'll open the public hearing, ask the applicant to come forward, ask the applicant if they've read the staff report, conditions of approval, and if you agree with them.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners and staff. My name is Christopher Glue, and I have read the report, and we agree with all the conditions.
Very good, sir, go ahead.
Thank you. It's my privilege to present to you tonight on behalf of my client, Marketplace. And I'd like to start off by thanking Gabriel for the excellent presentation he's done for everyone this evening. He did an excellent job of highlighting the project and addressing each aspect of our proposal. I'd like to start off, oh, our slide is up, with addressing the supplemental overview. And if we could go to Slide 2. 2845 Harbor Boulevard is a project location. It's off Ponderosa and Harbor Boulevard, directly across from the UFC gym and several collar dealerships. This project is an extension of the Measure X Distribution License, currently operating in good standing within the city of Costa Mesa. The retail storefront will be supported by a fully vertical operation. Marketplace currently operates two retail storefront cannabis operations in the Southern California region, in Lake Elsinore and Santa Ana, California. We utilize our California supply chain with our cultivation and manufacturing licenses, and of course, our Costa Mesa-based distribution. The team has a robust roster of talent to draw from. We have assembled a diverse leadership team that are present this evening to navigate the operations of the company. The company successfully employs over 50 individuals in all aspects of the cannabis sector. The leadership team draws on a variety of backgrounds and diverse leadership perspectives. Clayborne Tanner, who's present this evening, will utilize his Costa Mesa-based operational experience and distribution supply chain to support operations. Anna Gallardo will perform the CEO duties and is excited to integrate her marketing and diversity programs she has pioneered. Patrick Martin, alongside Daphne Camerina, will provide the operations-side leadership, drawing on their vast experience in the cannabis industry as a model for future success. Annabelle Ng will oversee our human resources and local hiring initiatives in the city. If you could go to Slide 3, Michelle? Thank you. This slide reflects the proposal for our exterior and interior design. Our goal here is to maintain the ideal existing conditions with improved features. Updated structure, improved traffic flow, and modernized landscaping, with the inclusion of California drought-tolerant species. We actually are going to be over 2,000-square-foot of landscaping when the project is complete. Our goal is to have a design and functionality that the city of Costa Mesa can be proud of. Our team members have already completed the training and received certification in a traffic control and flagging. The training was provided under the California Manual of Traffic Control, Part 6, consistent with CAL OSHA standards. Our three staff members, one of which is present tonight, who completed, both, two of which are present tonight, both scored over 94% on the exam. These individuals will be prepared to responsibly manage traffic flow to eliminate any potential congestion and help ensure traffic flow is consistent with our model for success. Additionally, our parking attendants will assist security staff in maintaining a litter-free environment and assist with compliance measures outside of the storefront. If you go to the next slide. Our company's main operational mantra is "Community First." We understand to be successful in the community, we must work with our neighbors to minimize impact and maximize benefit. The city required a 500-foot radius for mailers to the surrounding community. We mailed twice to 1,000 feet in English and Spanish, inviting input and providing email and telephone contact information. Our street team followed up and went door-to-door as well. If you go to Slide 5. The team also mailed an invitation to 1,000 feet for a community outreach event, which we held on-site at the location. The community event was on March 8, where we served food from a local food establishment. The parking lot was utilized to welcome all passersby. We received overwhelming support for our proposed storefront. We pride ourselves on communication, and just today, we saw the email that came out from one gentleman, Mr. Allen, and he put his contact information on the email. I reached out to him today and had a quick conversation about the impact off Lemon Street for his residence. He indicated to me that he was very concerned about the previous usage, where they had parked unloaded car trucks right in front of his house, and he had to have his windows open at night because he doesn't have air conditioning. I informed him of the mitigation measures we are going to employ on Lemon Street. We're going to close off the gate. We're going to make sure there's no traffic outside that gate from any of our customers. After speaking with him for a few moments, he was very happy about the mitigation measures we planned to put into effect. I gave him my personal cellphone and email address, and he said he now supports our location. And I would like to apologize to Commissioner Erath. We did catch an error in one of the emails we sent out to the Commissioners, where the wrong telephone number was provided. So, I'll make sure I give you an updated contact information today. If you could go to the next slide. Security is a mainstay of our operational platform. We pride ourselves on 360-degree monitored camera We pride ourselves on 360-degree monitored camera coverage and property-wide sweeping security personnel 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. Our security model is a layered system approach designed to prevent diversion, theft, and other potential impacts. All of the security is designed by a highly credentialed security professional with extensive cannabis experience. Our contract security firm is veteran-owned and operated by prior service security. If you go to Slide 7. Community support is important to our organization. To ensure that we give back to the community that supports us, we have a foundation that was established to provide opportunities for the less fortunate members of the communities we serve. We are a proud supporter of a local Costa Mesa gym, Triumpho Jiu-Jitsu. We have a scholarship program that allows free memberships and competition fees for income-challenged residents of Costa Mesa. We see this as an opportunity to provide access to physical fitness and athletic achievement. We are committed to charity and engagement in the community. We attend and support the local community organizations and actively seek relationships with local charities. Additionally, we did reach out to all the businesses that surround our location and got nothing but overwhelming support. My personal cellphone was on our outreach letter, and I did receive several phone calls. All of the phone calls were asking me when we were going to open so they didn't have to drive to San Ana anymore. If you could go to Slide 8. Wanted to thank you for your time this evening, Commissioners and staff. I know you put a lot of hard work into this. We appreciate all your comments. And our whole team is here to answer any questions you may have from us this evening.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner E. Rath, any questions of the applicant?
Be ready, guys, if you notice, there's an order to this.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate it.
And thank you, Mr. Glue, for the presentation. It was, it was very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead and start with attachment number 2 in your executive summary. Page 3 out of 4. Under the subheading "Walkability/Bikability/Active Transportation", it says, "We encourage ride-share of carpools and technology." I really don't know what that means. What, you encourage technology?
No, actually, Uber. We encourage people to take ride-sharing opportunities. And with our employees, we incentivize them to utilize walking to work. We incentivize them to use ride-sharing. We also offer discounts and specials for residents who take, not bus, either bus transportation, bicycle transportation, or pedestrian.
Okay. Thank you. We can also go to page number 4. Under the heading, it's the second one, "Security Plan: Technology Solutions, Process, and Training."
Yes.
It's the first sentence. "The reviewed and approved security plan is prepared and installed by a trusted local subject matter expert who has a dozen and a half so-and-so." Who is your?
Thomas Johnson.
Thomas Johnson.
Yeah, he did a lot of the Measure-X security programs.
Okay. Yeah, only reason why I asked, there's just some ambiguity in here with some of the claims, so it'd be good to kind of round out some of the information. Going back to page 3 out of 4, if you go to the top, under the subheading "Employees." I'm going to start in the middle. I'll read it to you, Mr. Glue. "We will partner with the Chamber of Commerce on a 'hire local and use temporary signs to target drive-by/bike-by potential employees, cannabis jobs, or good-paying jobs with opportunities for advancement and creation of careers.'" And this is the part that I want to focus on. "The team will look to hire from Orange Coast Community College due to success in hiring from this demographic." Okay. Have you established a relationship with Orange Coast College yet? And I'm not asking this just because I'm a past student or professor, or that it's right down the street, but, yeah.
No, we actually have, in San Ana, we had the, a lot of outreach efforts trying to set up local job fairs, and to be honest, we are looking for a lot of support from staff and from the Commission, because we kind of have got a little bit of pushback about utilizing some of the campuses for local job fairs for cannabis. So, we've been kind of relegated to trying to develop our own job fairs, marketing them ourselves. We've had a little bit of pushback from these, from the community colleges in embracing our idea for local job fairs.
Yeah, well, I certainly support you in this idea for trying to leverage the community colleges. I came up through the community college before going on through school for a long time, and I support it tremendously. But in thinking about this, I'm not entirely sure if this went into the decision process, but places like Orange Coast College are the recipients of what are called HERF funds more recently, so Higher Education Emergency Relief Funds that come from the federal government. And anytime that there's a program that's federally funded, it's also, there's like strings attached to it, right? Like, will not promote a scheduled drug on campus that receives federal funds, right? So, I'm not a lawyer. I was only very briefly playing Tarquin Preziosi earlier because my monitor wasn't working. But I would definitely want to look into that first, because you may not be eligible for on-campus.
It may explain some of the resistance we've got in trying to establish those relationships. But we are always actively seeking ways to put ourselves out to the community to let them know that we are trying to local hire, and that is our goal. It's always to get local hire.
Okay. I didn't really write this down, but it kind of came about with staffs and your presentations. The site has a lot of excess parking, right? Is there any thought as to what you can do to better utilize that space? I mean, this is one of the, I think, first instances that we've seen where this site has a lot of parking, right?
We actually thought that was a good thing. We thought that having a lot of parking would be ideal, so there wouldn't be any impact, and we can manage traffic flow in a more ideal way. With our traffic flaggers, our intention was to utilize Harbor and Ponderosa to manage the traffic flow, so we could direct people to turn right out of the Ponderosa exit so that they're going back out towards Harbor. Kind of the ideal situation is that we are able to maintain consistent traffic flow so we can deal with impact on both sides, both coming in off Harbor and exiting off Ponderosa. That's something I talked to some local residents about as well. That would be one of our mitigation measures to reduce impact on any of the residential communities behind our building.
Okay. I appreciate, appreciate you sharing that. I think that's it for my questions for right now. Thank you very much, Mr. Glue.
You're welcome.
Okay. Commissioner Vivar, you have questions for the applicant?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Glue. I do have two questions. So, when did you put in your application for cannabis? Was that sometime last year, months ago?
Yeah. We were actually the second person to turn in our application on the first day it was open.
So, that happened August last year?
Yes.
And when did you start conducting your public outreach?
We started actually in the beginning of the year. We had, our first mailing went out. I can't remember the exact date, but it was probably a little bit after the beginning of the year. Then we had the community outreach event in March, and then we did a subsequent mailer, and then we also did a door-to-door campaign. And then we've also been visiting businesses that were in the local proximity, and that was over the past month.
Did you have any contact with people who primarily speak Spanish or a second language and were able to communicate the aspects of your project with them?
We actually, I didn't run into anyone that had Spanish as a primary language. We did send out the mailer in Spanish. We do have several members on staff that speak Spanish, and I was going to direct all communication to them if we received any communication in the Spanish language. We went to businesses, we went to residences, and from what we experienced, we only experienced people that were speaking English.
Okay. And since you are overparked, do you feel you really have that need for that second, for leasing that parcel? I'm just curious as to why you're doing that if you have so much parking available.
Well, mainly, it's because we want to be over-prepared, not under-prepared. You know, we anticipate having a successful business, and we'd like to be ready to take on that type of demand. But another thing we'd like to do is also dedicate some of that space to the public. We could have community outreach events there. We could allow the city to use some of that space for events. We'd like to just be a good patron with the city, and we'd like to share some of that overabundance.
Okay, so, I guess just like small question tied to that, and I think that's it for me. But, so, how many spaces, vehicle parking spaces, do you intend to utilize on that parcel, the second parcel?
Well, asking a business owner how successful they plan to be, I would like to utilize all 75. I hope we're that busy. But realistically, I think that based on our anticipated traffic flow, we would probably use 20 to 30 spots.
Of the, of the parcel that you're leasing out, the one that has access through Harbor? Is that what you're referring to, sir?
Oh, that spot only has seven spots.
Okay, okay.
We planned to put our employee parking over in that corner so they wouldn't impact any of the parking for the customers.
I see. Okay, I think that's it for me, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I defer back to you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Rojas, any questions to the applicant?
No, you already answered them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Toller?
No, thank you for the presentation, and thanks, everybody, for coming.
Thank you.
No questions.
Commissioner Russell?
No questions. Thank you.
Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Okay. So, so I want to follow on with some of my other Commissioners. I don't think this is a big deal, but I'm sitting here going, "Why do these guys want all this parking on this little, this little building?" And then I realize, well, maybe they want to fill up all 75 spots, so. And you could be very busy. Not that that's a bad thing. What I will be, I know you said you have trained your traffic monitors.
Correct.
I don't think I've seen any conditions relative to traffic monitoring, other than if parking becomes a problem, then you'll sit down with Mr. Drapkin and his crew and talk some more. I just want to see if, you know, I think we've conditioned, was it Mr. Drapkin? 60-day for 60 days? Was it for, for Harbor? I think it was 60.
90.
90? Okay. We'll get through the public hearing, but I may ask you to park a couple of those attendants for the first 90 days, because if that place is popular and you have 70 cars pouring in there and out, it's going to be busy, and I want to make sure that ingress and egress is adequately managed. So, that's it for my questions. So, I will open the public comment portion of the public hearing. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak to this matter, please come forward, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Yes?
Good evening. My name is Chelsea Fogelin, and I am a longtime resident and business owner here in Costa Mesa. And I'm going to do my very best to keep it brief, because it's late into the night for us all. But I'm here this evening because I felt compelled to lend my support to the application for 2845 Harbor Boulevard. From an economic standpoint, it's important to recognize the value that such a business brings to a city and a community. And that type of economic value, that's a benefit to everybody in the city in the long run. Having longstanding businesses, thriving businesses fuels a healthy city. In addition, the cannabis industry serves a wildly diverse demographic. We've seen that tonight. I think that always brings a sense of community value, a sense of togetherness and honesty to the city as well. So, really in closing, I think it's important to mention and consider that these businesses, they're not an easy feat for anyone, and the length of tonight's meeting kind of speaks to that. So, the individuals who see these opportunities through, they're proven wise and savvy businesspeople, and they've definitely demonstrated a sense of professionalism and courtesy to get to the point to opening doors like this to our community. So, again, I would just say, hey, approve the application for them, and thanks for your time tonight.
Thanks so much. Anyone else in the chambers wish to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none. Anyone on Zoom or telephone, Anna?
No, there is not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll close public comment then. Any final comments from the applicant?
No, I think we're good.
Okay, very good. Thank you, sir. All right, so we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Any motions or any further questions of staff real quick? If you have a motion, please touch the motion button on your screen. See anyone yet? Okay, so I see Commissioner Toller, you have a motion.
Sure. I move that the Planning Commission find the project categorically exempt from the provisions of SEQA, Section 15301, and approve Planning Application 2117, subject to conditions of approval.
Okay, and I see that there's a second on the motion by Commissioner Russell. Commissioner Toller, you wish to make comments on that motion?
I don't have very many comments, but it, breathing life into an old building and a big part of town, and I wish the business well. I think it, in terms of potential impacts, the sorts that we've heard about tonight, I don't think they're really existent. I think there's just plenty of room here for everything and everyone, and I don't see any concerns. And I think we could totally make the findings, and that's it.
Okay. I'm going to jump in late, but I'm going to ask the maker of the motion if they'd be willing to accept a condition that requires two traffic managers onsite for the first 90 days of operation.
I think that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Russell, do you agree with the additions? And if you do, would you like to comment on the motion?
Not really. I mean, it's, I think this is a good location. I think it's a good reuse of the property. It's a lot of parking. I see a park out there. But good luck.
Okay. Commissioner E. Rath, any comments? Commissioner Vivar? Mike, there you go.
Yeah, I just also support the motion. I appreciate the fact that the applicant seems to have been paying attention to past meetings and recognizes the importance of having trained staff to manage parking, especially if your business does in fact become very popular and sort of the main attraction along Harbor Boulevard or something like that. So, good to know that you are going to have trained staff, and especially as there, I think, are still other buildings on the site who, that are empty. And so, in the event that those at some point are occupied, having people to manage the site, I think, is great, people who are trained. So, yeah, just, I'll support the motion. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Rojas, any comments? Okay. Commissioner Zick, no? Go ahead, sir.
I'm impressed by the public outreach that you made, and it's clear you were successful with communicating your intention and your business plans, to the extent that we have absolutely nobody, we have one person, come forward and speak, and of course, in support of your project. So, good luck to you.
Thank you. I would echo that sentiment, and just kind of as a reminder, going forward with all the applications that we'll be hearing at some point is, just because your property is, has a general plan, land use designation that allows it, and zoning that allows it, these aren't slam dunks. These are discretionary reviews. Do your outreach, as this applicant did. Don't assume anything, and come in with a good case, and we'll see what happens. But I agree with Vice Chair Zick. This is, this is how you do it. So, anyway, I'll support the motion. Can we have an electronic vote, please?
Commissioner E. Rath, if you could put your... The motion carries 7-0.
Okay, very good. That motion is final, unless appealed to the City Council within seven days. Good luck, folks. Welcome to Costa Mesa. All right. Public hearing item number 3. Anna, would you please read it to the record?
Public hearing item number 3, Planning Application 21-16 for a retail cannabis storefront use with delivery located at 1854 Newport Boulevard. Please note, we have received public comments on this item that have been provided to the Commission and made a part of the record. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
Okay, Commissioner E. Rath, any communications to report?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair, as mentioned earlier.
Thank you, Chair. As mentioned earlier, I tried to call Mr. Clu and apparently it was the wrong number, so.
Oh, okay. Yeah, there you go. Commissioner Vivar?
Had email communication with Jim Fitzpatrick.
Okay, Commissioner Rojas?
None, sir.
Commissioner Toller?
Yes, I had a chat with some staff today about the project and I also exchanged a couple of emails with representative of the applicant.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Russell?
I exchanged one email with the applicant's representative.
Okay. None from the vice chair. Also received an email from the applicant's representative, did not have an opportunity to respond. Ms. Halligan, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair DeAurical and Commissioners. Tonight, I am presenting Planning Application 21-16, a conditional use permit to establish a cannabis retail storefront with non-storefront delivery. The use is conditionally permitted per the Costa Mesa Municipal Code. The city's application process involves several steps. At this point, the applicant is in the conditional use permit step. If approved, they would move on to obtaining building permits and passing inspections. After passing inspections, the city would be able to issue a cannabis business permit and then a city business license. After that point, the applicant would be required to obtain a state license prior to operating. The approximately 11,500 square foot property is located at the northeast corner of Newport Boulevard and Broadway, across from Triangle Square. The site is zoned C2, General Business District. Existing development includes a 1,300 square foot commercial building, formerly used as a donut shop with a drive-through. Adjacent uses include other commercial buildings with retail uses. The subject property meets the separation requirements for a cannabis storefront. These photos of the existing conditions show that the building facade is in disrepair. The previous use, the donut shop with delivery, was vacated well over a year ago. Here are some renderings of the proposed exterior improvements as well as landscaping enhancements. The applicant proposes to update the building facade with new finishes, windows and doors for a more contemporary look. The landscaping would be replaced with properly irrigated plants, including 11 trees. The signing for Dippity by Mr. Nice Guy would be processed under a separate permit. Here is the proposed site plan. A shed would be removed from the parking lot and then it would be restriped to increase parking from 10 stalls to 11. Bike racks would be added, so there would be a total of 12 parking spaces. The municipal code requires 14 parking spaces for every thousand square feet of retail space. Based on this ratio, the required parking for the 1,300 square foot building is five spaces. The proposed plan exceeds the parking requirement by seven stalls. One parking stall located closest to a limited access door would be the location where vendors and delivery vehicles are allowed to park. There are two driveways off Newport Boulevard and one off Broadway. The egress at Broadway would allow right turns only, directing traffic away from the residential neighborhood. Transportation reached out to planning to recommend that the southern driveway on Newport Boulevard be closed. This would reduce the total number of driveways along Newport to one. Here is the proposed floor plan. The flow of customers would be one way. Customers would only enter through a dedicated public entrance. An employee would verify their identity and age before allowing the customer to continue to the retail sales area. After a transaction is complete, they must exit through a dedicated exit door. A security guard would monitor the area at all times to ensure that customers are following regulations. A limited access door would be located toward the rear of the southwest side of the building. Only employees with security clearance would have access through this door. Here are some renderings of the proposed interior space so you can get a feel of the small-scale retail area, which would be approximately 800 square feet. The applicant provided a detailed business plan that was evaluated by the city's cannabis consultant. The business plan describes the owner's expertise, proof of capitalization, and proposed day-to-day operations. The business plan contains proprietary details and therefore is not attached. The applicant also provided a professionally-prepared security plan that was evaluated by the city's cannabis consultant. The cannabis consultant determined that the plan addresses the city and the state's requirements for safety. There are 70 conditions of approval. I wanted to point out operational condition of approval number seven, that if parking problems develop, the business must institute measures to minimize or eliminate the problem per the Director of Economic and Development Services. Temporary or permanent parking management strategies include, but are not limited to, reducing hours, having parking monitors, encouraging customers to take advantage of delivery services, offering an employee shuttle, and incentivizing carpooling, cycling, or taking public transportation. The required CUP findings are that the proposed use is substantially compatible with developments in the same general area and would not be materially detrimental to other properties within the area. Granting the conditional use permit will not be materially detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare within the public or otherwise injurious to the property or improvements within the immediate neighborhood. Granting the conditional use permit will not allow a use, density, or intensity which is not in accordance with the general plan designation and any applicable specific plan for the property. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution to find the project categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act per SEQA Guideline, Section 15301, Class 1, Existing Facilities, and approve Planning Application 21-16, subject to conditions of approval and code requirements. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for further questions as well as the applicant's agent.
Thank you, Ms. Halligan. You pitched a doubleheader tonight. Good job.
Thank you.
Commissioner Erath, questions of staff?
Always. Thank you. Ms. Halligan, thank you so much for the presentation, as always. It's very concise and right to the point. I appreciate that. I have several observations and questions. Let me just think of how I'm going to line this up. If you could please turn to the executive summary right after the conditions of approval. You'll see in the logo, Mr. Nice Guy, which I'm assuming it's based on the movie from back in the 90s, right? Okay. That Mr. Nice Guy in the eye has a cannabis leaf in it, as do the renderings in the building. Are those cannabis leaves going to be removed?
That is correct. The city's code is very specific that they cannot have a cannabis leaf nor the word cannabis.
I assumed it came out before they were informed because it was copyrighted in 2021 at the bottom. So I figured it just came out after that. Okay. I have a question. This one's for the applicant later. I think that's it. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Vivar, questions?
Yes, sir, two questions. Thank you, Ms. Halligan, for your presentation. I do have two quick questions. So one of them is regarding the access. So the site will have a total of two access points, is that it? Because you're recommending one be closed off.
Transportation went over the site again today and found an opportunity to close one of the driveways on Newport Boulevard. Their staff's available to discuss that decision.
Sure.
Do you want to hear from the staff?
Yes, yes. Please, thank you.
Hi there, Commissioner Vivar and the rest of the commission and Chair and Vice Chair. If you can restate the specific question.
So would you mind somebody from Transportation explaining sort of the reasoning behind limiting that third or whatever driveway access?
Yes, absolutely. Within the general plan circulation element, we have two policies. One is C-2.2, which says, "Avoid the creation of frequent driveways for new development access and active pedestrian areas that create conflict points between pedestrians and vehicles." Policy C-2.3, which is more relevant here, says to encourage commercial property owners to use shared driveway access and interconnected roads within blocks where feasible and require driveway access closures or consolidations or both when a site is remodeled or redeveloped. And there's also further guidance within our city's active transportation plan where feasible, reduce or eliminate conflict points such as driveways that cross the sidewalk. And this is a clear example of that adjacent to a bus stop.
Of course, yeah. I think that's great. I do appreciate staff's multiple reviews, it seems like, on the driveway access. And I appreciate that those efforts to make this project safer for active transportation users and transit riders. So there was something in the staff report about access or egress from one of the driveways being limited to right turns. Was that the driveway that was recommended to be closed off, the one that had that access recommendation previously?
No, the driveway that staff is recommending to close is along Newport Boulevard. The closest north of Broadway. The staff is recommending the right turn at the egress location on Broadway itself.
So it's right turn only, egress, not ingress as well, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So I'm guessing that would be the right turn only signage, right, posted?
Correct.
Okay. And one other question, thank you, sir, for that, is related just to the staff report regarding the previous donut shop operation. So the staff report says that this site will operate at hours that seem to be more limited than the previous use. Are you able to speak to what the previous hours were? And if not, that's okay.
The previous hours of operation, I'm not sure what hour they opened in the morning, but they had a drive-through that was open until 2:00 a.m. and perhaps even later.
Okay. All right. That's it for me, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Thank you, staff.
Thank you. Commissioner Rojas, any questions, staff?
No, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Toller?
I was going to ask about that driveway, but I think you answered all my questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Russell?
I also was going to ask about the driveway, so you've covered it. Thank you.
Vice Chair, okay. I have no questions either, so we'll open the public hearing. We had a guy that looked just like you up here about 10 minutes ago.
I'm pitching a doubleheader, too.
So have you read the staff report and the conditions of approval? Do you agree with them?
I do.
Okay, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Sorry, I should have had both reports up here ready to go, but give me one second.
The other guy was a little bit better looking, but that's all right.
Well, let's get him back up here then. All right. Sorry, I've taken up the whole space now. All right. Again, good evening, Commissioners. And this is our Dippity presentation by Mr. Nice Guy. Thank you to Michelle again and the staff. She did an excellent job of going over everything. I'll try and be more brief this time because we're covering a lot of the same ground. If you could go to Slide 2, please. This project is at 1854 Newport Boulevard. We're directly across from Triangle Square. This project is also an extension of a Measure X Distribution License, which is currently operating as well and in good standing in the city of Costa Mesa. This retail storefront operation will be powered by the Mr. Nice Guy Vertical Operations Team. The Mr. Nice Guy team draws from its experience as a multi-state operator with over 25 licensed storefront locations. Mr. Nice Guy has a robust 200,000-square-foot cultivation in Oregon and a state-of-the-art cultivation in Salinas, California. Included in the platform are their distribution and manufacturing licenses as well. The company successfully employs over 390 individuals in all aspects of the cannabis sector. If you could go to Slide 3. Our leadership team, which is actually present here tonight as well, consists of Alex Wong and Ty Riley, who are both present, and they will provide the operations-side leadership, drawing on their vast cannabis experience. Ms. Erica Shu, she will actually be responsible for metric and inventory compliance. And Mr. Andy Chow will be the store manager. Mr. Conrad Gunderson is also here. He's a local Costa Mesa resident. He'll be the Human Resources Director. If you could go to Slide 4. This is the proposed exterior and interior, which Michelle already showed staff. So to not take up too much more time, I would like to add, though, that we are adding the California drought-tolerant species as well to this project. If you could go to Slide 5. Again, in this case, we did both English and Spanish mailers. We mailed two times as well on this location. And we also did an outreach event. At the outreach event, we were greeted by a lot of foot traffic coming across, asking us if we were already open, encouraging us to keep the name Dippity. We thought that maintaining that identity would improve, you know, the community's response to the site. And we would also keep some of the historical significance of the location. You could go to Slide 5. At the outreach event, our street team also followed up with a lot of the contacts they got that evening and went door-to-door to engage the residential neighbors. We personally reached out to all the surrounding businesses. We have excellent relationship with the gym that's located right behind and some of the other locations that are immediately adjacent to our property. You can go to the next slide. Security. Security is also a mainstay of our operational platform. We pride ourselves on 360-degree monitored camera coverage, property-wide sweeping security personnel, seven days a week. Our system is also a layered system at this property. It's designed to prevent theft, diversion, and potential impacts. All the security is designed by Thomas Johnson. And we also utilize prior service security, who the owner is actually a Purple Heart Honorary. If you go to Slide 8. Community support. We are proud member of helping out with the Triumpho Jiu-Jitsu program, providing scholarships to athletes. We actually have a foundation. It's called the Mr. Nice Guy Foundation, which creates charitable opportunities all over the state of California and in Oregon. If you could go to Slide 9. We are actively engaged in the community. We attend and support all local community organizations. And we're actively seeking relationships with additional local charities. If you go to the next slide, please. Our team has already completed the traffic management. We have additional three people that are certified as traffic flaggers at this location. There is a misprint on here. The Caltrans is not the correct entity. It's a program that's administered through Cal OSHA. And I brought the certificates of completion for that. And it's actually done through a safety center. And they certify the people in traffic safety flagging. As well, these traffic flaggers will be responsible for helping with security on the outside of the building. We did go through a lot of pains and efforts to secure the flow of traffic through the three access points. We understand that the commission has some concerns about closing off that other access point. And we can work with that. It was designed with our traffic flow management to utilize all three so that we could keep a nice, constant flow of traffic moving through those separate entrances, points of ingress and egress that would work to keep the flow of traffic moving at all times. That's it. You can move on to the next slide, which, thank you. We are here for any questions and comments you may have.
Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Erath?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you again, Mr. Clu. That was just even better than the last.
Because it was faster, right?
Okay. Executive summary, page 1 and 2.
This one I do not have in front of me, so if you don't mind reading that.
Sure. And maybe in the meantime, you could go back, if we can pull up his presentation. And go back, one, two. Back again to the organizations or local organizations. And, okay, there we go. Okay. In the, just under the main heading of executive summary, right before it gets into what we stand for subheading, it says, "Working with and donating to local organizations and hiring locally." I think I was a little bit unclear until your presentation. The executive summary in and of itself was pretty vague throughout. And I don't mean that as a jab to you. It's just... It's just, I have to follow up with some of this.
Sure.
So I appreciate that coming out in your presentation. If we go to page two out of four. It says, "Our workforces are sourced as locally as possible from the areas we operate with over a 75% local hire rate, and we anticipate in Costa Mesa, if granted a license, to get that over 90% and as close as 100% as possible of non-management positions." So what is your approach to hiring locally? How will you achieve this?
So we touched on this a little bit in the last presentation. We'd like to do community outreach. We now have a very large parking lot with one of our shared licensees that we can utilize for job fairs. We haven't had that opportunity in the past where we had a large facility that would hold such an event. So we would seek to get approval through probably the Planning Commission for a special event for local hiring and job fairs. We would actually make that available to all the cannabis operators that are licensed in the community so that they could as well participate and draw from the local community for us all to be successful in achieving 100% local hire. That's ideal for a business owner, so that way we can mitigate the impact of people driving into the community for work. It also keeps the dollars in the community, helps rise up the community.
Okay, great, thank you. And I think you'll likely note from the last item, some of the potential issues with the Orange Coast College approach. So I definitely recommend just kind of getting a, reaching out to maybe one of the trustees that represents this area to get some initial insight, because that may have to go to their board of trustees for approval, if you really do want to go down that road, right? I do want to maybe ask staff real quick. Are we now at the point of one ingress and one egress point out of the subject property?
My understanding is that Transportation will be recommending having, you know, one ingress off of Newport and one egress off of Broadway.
Okay, great.
Let me follow up with that, if you don't mind, just to give a little bit of a clarification of what the Transportation Division is looking for. They are looking for, as Michelle mentioned, the two access points and removing the access driveway closest to the corner on Newport Boulevard. The driveway to the north would be an in-and-out, and then the driveway on Broadway would be a right-hand turn-only exit onto Broadway. So, and then it would be, there would be an angled parking configuration change that would angle it, parking lot configuration change, that would angle it towards Newport so to restrict a potential left-hand turning further.
So ingress and egress out of Newport Boulevard, out of the same driveway, and then just egress onto Broadway?
Exiting on egress on Broadway, and then the circulation of the lot would circulate counterclockwise at that point.
Okay.
That was the Transportation Division's recommendation.
And that was the recommendation as of this morning?
That was the recommendation as of this morning, correct.
Okay, perfect. All right, I think that's it, Chair. Thank you so much.
Okay, Commissioner Vivar?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Clu, as well, for this presentation. Again, just a couple of questions here. The staff report mentions that you will have your vendor delivery operations and retail delivery operations take place at different hours of the day and not overlapping in order to, in an effort to free up your parking. So would you mind going a little into detail, like, when would those happen? Is one of them, is one of those operations going to happen in the morning and the other in the afternoon, or how do you plan to do that?
Sure. So the actual vendors will not actually come to the retail location. We have a Costa Mesa distribution facility, so all of our vendors will interface at the Costa Mesa distribution facility. So our drop-offs to the store for supply of product will only occur once a week, and our goal is to have that done immediately in opening hours when we would predict that that would be a low-traffic hour. And that'll be the same thing for the delivery. The delivery will load up first thing in the morning, and then they'll be out with their deliveries for the day. They won't be coming back and forth unless there's a very, very heavy traffic day, and then that would be only limited to probably one more visit to the location. So it would be very little interaction of that sort.
So after their deliveries, the vehicles will go back to your Measure X partner?
Though, actually, the delivery vehicles will maintain routes. Our logistic approach is to maintain the vehicles on the road at all times. I mean, as long as there's orders coming in, we can maintain routing, and we have a very good support staff to do that.
Okay. And then regarding, let's see. I think that might be it, Mr. Chairman. I'll think of my other question if it comes back to me. Thank you.
Flag me down if you think of it. Commissioner Rojas?
No, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Toller?
No questions.
Okay, Commissioner Russell?
No questions.
The Vice Chair.
Yes, I've got a comment. So we've got this slide in front of us. Could you advance to the next slide? Yeah. Something caught my attention on this slide, and it may have been in your last presentation. And so I'll give you my comment now about this. So I see boys and girls clubs of America on here, and if you go to the previous slide?
Yes.
And then I see, you know, youth with Mr. Nice Guy t-shirt and water bottles with your Mr. Nice Guy on it. And what I'm wondering about is that the state and our city with our ordinance has gone out of its way to be explicit about concern with locations and separation requirements. And I don't have a historical understanding of the rationale for that, but it's kind of intuitive to me as to why we would have these sorts of separation requirements. Our signage requirement, you can't have cannabis, you can't have depictions of leaves, and you're aware of that, too. And then I see something like this, and I guess I just can't help but wonder if there's an inconsistency between the message that this sort of thing might send, and I can understand a business wanting to get its tentacles into the community, and maybe a pipeline even. But I don't know that that's necessarily your intent in terms of a, kind of an ulterior motive. But to me, I'm concerned, and I'm just sharing the personal observation with you. We've gone out of our way to keep the signage clean, to keep separation requirements in place, and then if there's connection into the community that targets youth organizations, I just can't help but think that that runs counter to the underlying interests. So that's all I have to share with you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I have no questions, so we'll open the public comment portion of the public hearing. Anyone in the audience wish to speak to this matter, please come forward. Yes, sir.
Hello. I, first of all, I just want to express my support for the Transportation Staff's request to close a driveway on Newport Boulevard. I just want to make it clear that I support that, and I guess I'm probably going to be the only member of the public speaking, so, yeah. I also just wanted to quickly comment on development in general and the future, and specifically related to this lot. I mean, this is a corner lot in downtown Costa Mesa, right? And it's next to Triangle Square, and it's next to a bunch of other businesses that are right along the street and that have easy access to the sidewalk. And, I mean, this lot, this building, is not that. It doesn't have any easy access to, for pedestrians. You'd have to walk across the parking lot. I would hope that in the future, we can have actual, our zoning code, our development ordinances can be amended so that we can actually have buildings like the ones that are next to it on Newport Boulevard that are right up next to the sidewalk, that are easy to access. Like, if this building was right along the street, right on the corner, that would be like a perfect location. That would be great. You'd have so much pedestrian access right there, but instead, it's back behind, I don't know how many feet of asphalt. So it'd just be a lot better if we could change our codes, make sure that buildings are where the people are and not where the cars are. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, anyone on Zoom or phone?
No, there is not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. I'm assuming I can close the public hearing as well. Commissioners, any motions, comments, questions? Oops. Before my microphone gets cut off. Okay, just, if you have a motion, go ahead and press your motion button. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion. Hold on a second. Got lost. So I'm going to move that the commission find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA per SEQA guidelines, Section 15301, Class 1, existing facilities, and approved planning application 21-16, subject to findings in Exhibit A and conditions of approval in Exhibit B. Is there a second? Please hit your second, your seconding motion.
Sorry to interrupt, Chair. I did want to mention that.
Regarding the transportation.
I could verbalize that, I have to make it easy for you.
Could you please, yes?
No problem. And that condition request was remove the southern driveway, the northern driveway be two-way in-and-out, the lot configuration be circulate, clockwise circulation, and the right-hand exit on Broadway only with driveway, with the driveway configuration, and all other changes to be approved by the Public Works Director before building permit issuance.
Does that sound about right? Because you're marching up here.
Yeah, I wanted to, to, I wanted to make sure that it was counterclockwise.
Yeah, counterclockwise.
And that would allow the applicant to continue their existing configuration of the parking, correct?
We could work that out before the building permit without a problem as far as.
Okay, that's fine. So that condition is incorporated into my motion. Does the second concur?
I'll concur.
Okay. Any comments on the motion? Commissioner Russell?
Sure, just.
I mean, Commissioner Toller?
I'll let it go this time.
Thank you.
I am in support of the motion. I'm glad that Transportation Department caught that. I think there's a ton of driveways right there, and it's, it's too much, and it's, and I checked it in the circulation element today. It's a, I don't know if a lot of people skim by this when they're reading through our general plan, but we have pedestrian priority areas, and that is in one of those spots. And I totally agree with the Transportation Department. We're implementing the recommendations and the policies as a general plan. It's real straightforward, consolidating driveways. I think they're, especially on high-speed streets, I think they're unfortunate, and as often as we could do this sort of thing, I just want to say thank you to staff for flagging that and making it, making it work, so. I also want to echo what the commenter said tonight about zoning. I feel this way about a lot of projects that, well, it's just occupying of one-story, little small building, and part of me thinks, why isn't something else going in there? This is downtown Costa Mesa. That's valuable land. I think our zoning requires 20-foot setbacks, two-story max, a lot of parking, and it's virtually unbuildable. So as happy as I am to see a cool business of clean, you know, just breathing new energy into this place, part of me is wanting to see new construction also. So just going to throw that out there, but thank you.
Not going to get any argument from me on that. Anyone else? Commissioner Erath?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, this site is interesting. I think, you know, other folks here on the dais might agree that, you know, I grew up going to this place. In high school, I'd go there to get, you know, ham and cheese croissants at all hours of the day and night, right? And the owners were always really cool. They never seemed to sleep. It was always open. And, yeah, I have a lot of personal memories there, and I'm glad that you're keeping the name. I think that's really cool. So I applaud you for that. With that, I'm all done. Thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Vivar, do you have comments on the motion?
Yes, sir. I want to thank the applicant for the efforts in public outreach, and especially including those notices in Spanish. I'd like to see what it looked like at some point. I'm just curious, but I appreciate that effort to reach out to people who might not have a handle on the English language. And I also appreciate, I want to appreciate staff's hard work on this, both on the report as a whole, but also the efforts to make this site safer for pedestrians and cyclists and looking at that access assessment or the access layout. And I also appreciate the applicant taking the initiative for having not one or two, but three people who are certified in flagging. I imagine you might be using a couple of those during the first few months of operations, so glad that you're going to have that. And, yeah, so I'll support this. I am concerned about the comment that Vice Chairman Zieg made about the t-shirts, and maybe Mr. Preziosi at some point, either now or in his report later on, can weigh in on whether or not that sort of marketing, those marketing efforts would be okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. Motion on the floor by the Chair approving planning application 2116, subject to SEQA and the findings and conditions of approval, seconded by Erath. Please vote.
That motion carries 7-0.
Okay, that decision is final unless appealed to the City Council within seven days. Good luck to you folks as well. So that ends our public hearing agenda for tonight. We have no old business, no new business. We'll move to departmental reports. Public Services, Mr. Yang.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and honorable members of the Planning Commission. The only report that the Public Works Department has to make is that the traffic signal at Baker Street and Randolph Avenue is now up and running. It's been energized and turned on, so therefore, we have another functioning traffic signal here in the city of Costa Mesa. Thank you, and I defer back to the Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Development Services, Ms. Lee or Mr. Drapkin?
Good evening, Chair. I have no report this evening, considering the hour, but we will be doing our mid-year update of planning activities at our next meeting.
Awesome. Good to see you again, by the way. Mr. Preziosi, City Attorney's Report?
No report this evening, Chair.
Okay, we'll stand in adjournment till the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting of Monday, August 22, 2022. Good night.